Good morning. I'm going to call to order this meeting of the Monroe County Board of Commissioners. It is Wednesday, September 25th, 2024. And I'll note for the record that all three commissioners are present here in the NatU Hill Room. And we will begin with our public statement. We, the Monroe County Board of Commissioners, renew our commitment to welcome and protect the rights of all people, regardless of age, race, color, creed, disability, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, marital status, economic status, and national origin. And we affirm the right of every person to live peacefully and without fear, and we will fight and resist at every step discrimination and harmful policies, whatever their source. We also stand in support of our county public school systems, both RBB and MCCSC. And with that, we do have an agenda item.
Yes. I move to add item K, agreement with comprehensive correctional care for the Monroe County Correctional Center Medical Services. Fund name, county general. Fund number 1,000, in an amount of $1,536,616.
Second.
Right. We have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor of adding item K signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. With that, we will move on to our department updates. First, we have Ms. Kelly at the Health Department.
Good morning, commissioners. Just a few updates. Emergency room visits for COVID-like illness have decreased, but wastewater concentrations of COVID have increased as of September 17. A new variant is currently being launched, XBC. Main symptoms are high fever, tiredness, cough, and sore throat. The Health Department does still have free COVID tests available. The public can pick these up Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And flu and COVID vaccines are available through the Public Health Clinic located at 333 Miller Drive in Bloomington. You can call 812-353-3244 for more information or an appointment.
Right. Thank you so much. Comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No.
Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
All right. Thank you so much, Ms. Kelly. Appreciate it. Next, we have Ms. Myers here from Rural Transit.
Good morning.
Good morning. I haven't seen you in so long.
I know. Monday night, right? It's been a long time.
Wait, wait, wait. I like seeing her. Come on.
I know. But we spend an evening on Monday.
In person, no less.
Yeah.
Right, right. All right.
Well, I'm just here to give you a quarterly update for Rural Transit operations, January through -- so I'm Chris Myers, sorry. Area 10, Agency on Aging. I always forget to do that. Like, everybody knows that. So January through August trips, system-wide, of course, were four counties that we serve. We had 29,798 trips. That's up about 4% from last year, the same amount of time. Monroe County of that is just over 13,000 trips. Of course, Monroe County is about 44% of the whole four-county area that we serve. Then we also have the urban-area trips that we've been doing in addition to that in Monroe County since January, and we had 4,127 trips for that, for those eight months. That has been a 55-45 split, so 45% of those urban trips have been really Ellisville one-way, and then the rest of them were the Monroe County outside the city of Bloomington urban trips. So total Monroe County trips are, you know, just over 17,000 for the year so far. That's up from 9,000 last year for Monroe County, just to give you an idea for that. I wanted to let you know that our Rural Transit staff attended the NDOT Drug and Alcohol Program Manager trainings that they had to go to. They do that every couple of years. It's in Columbus. That was in August, so we're in compliance with that, which is an FTA requirement. We currently have 17 drivers, 16 drivers, sorry, as of yesterday. We had one out on medical leave. So we have nine full-time, seven part-time. We are still short two full-time drivers. So always getting the word out, if anyone has anyone that's kind of semi-retired that might be interested in helping people with the demand response trips, we always could use a couple more people. And then we also have, and Angie's got on her calendar, I'm sure, the triennial NDOT compliance review, which is coming up this year. We have to get all the documents in line for that November 7th, and then there's going to be an onsite visit in December. It's December 10th, so we'll have some updates on that soon, too. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about Rural Transit.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
I just hope that we can get funding worked out with Bloomington Transit and other entities to help with some of this, because I know that there's a struggle for the funding.
There is indeed. We were at the Ellisville Town Council meeting on Monday, and they declined to provide service or pay for service for next year for the shadow service for the urban trips related to Ellisville. So they declined to do that, which is really unfortunate, and I hope the folks in Ellisville are talking to their town council members.
Right. Hopefully, there'll be some further discussions, you know, in the works between now and the end of the year. But as of right now, we don't quite yet know if there's going to be a continued parallel service providing that urban-to-urban.
Right. Yep. That's very unfortunate for a lot of folks, as we see.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, especially because some of those are for medical appointments.
Sure.
Pickup medications, things like that. These are not going down to buy a new pair of shoes, kind of thing.
Yeah.
Most of them are medical or employment.
Yeah.
Those are the two things that are the highest demand.
Yeah.
Yes.
Education. Think of all the things. Yep, for sure. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right. We also have Ms. Nestor Jellin, the Director of Planning, with her hand raised to offer a department update. Ms. Nestor Jellin.
Good morning, commissioners. I just wanted to provide an update on the county development ordinance. We were able to hear the public successfully last night at our first public hearing in the NatU Hill Room. We went until about 9:45 and got through all of the public comment that was in the room. However, the Plan Commission did vote to continue the hearing to October 1st in the NatU Hill Room, again at 5:30. So anyone that was not able to speak or wishes to follow along, we do invite you to come back for October 1st at 5:30 p.m. in the NatU Hill Room. I've also updated the monroecdo.com website, so it will be one of the first things you see at the top of the page. So happy to answer any questions, and thank you all for, the commissioners, for attending last night. I know you've had a late night and then an early start this morning, and for all of you, Angie included, to help us to get organized last night.
Thank you so much. Any comments or questions? Commissioner Giffens?
I was surprised at the number of people who came out last night. I mean, I didn't know what the room capacity was until last night for the NatU Hill Room, but we sure found out.
Yeah.
And I also want to compliment Ms. Nestor Jellin and all of the planning staff for an exceptionally professional presentation and a job well done.
Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I'd just like to thank all the people who obligingly left the room last night when it was clearly way over capacity, and we were in danger of being closed down by the fire departments. I also want to thank the deputy whose name?
Mulder. Mulder.
Deputy Mulder, who came and so very nicely and efficiently and quickly handled the situation, which was becoming a little bit agitated.
No, you did a great job. And no, thank you to all the staff. I agree. I echo that. And having those tables out there, and we had the system going downstairs so people could see and watch the meeting from downstairs, that really great thinking, great planning, as you're good at, but great planning for that. Really appreciate it. Everybody got heard, and that was wonderful. But in case people didn't, we have next week. So thank you again for making that a really smooth evening. Appreciate that. All right. Any other department updates? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Public comment is reserved for items that are not on our agenda, and we invite you to come up to the podium here in NatU Hill or raise your hand in teams. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please give us your name and your county of residence. Is there anyone who wishes to offer public comment? You may go to the podium, sir.
Will there be a timer to?
There is a timer on the screen to that side of you, to your left, but it's also up there, and I don't know if TSD can make that timer larger for our commenter.
The time limit is three minutes.
There you go. It's very large on the screen, both screens.
I would rather focus my attention
Please.
on you all.
Please. That'd be great. Thank you.
So if you'll bear with me, I'm going to set a timer on my phone. Okay, thank you all for being available for my public comment. My name is Joe Davis. I am a 30-year resident of Monroe County, and I am here today to speak about the runaway freight train that the current CIB and the proposed expansion of the Convention Center is. The public has not been able to fully be involved in this process. This past 16th of September, there was a public hearing held and the, sponsored by the CIB, that was held in the Convention Center for the public to provide input on the proposed designs. The, uh, there were, the only announcement that went out into the community that I really can see was provided by Dave Askin's B-Square Bulletin. As a matter of fact, I spoke with Adam Stillwell and Martin O'Neill at Katz, Katz TV, who typically records these types of public events, so that not only can the public provide input, but also, too, they can, they can see what has taken place during these open-door events. Katz read about the red notice from the B-Square Beacon. They reached out to the CIB and said, "Do you want us to cover this?" And the CIB responded, "No, we've got it under control," or something to that effect. And so Katz was told not to come and cover the event. This event was for public input, and it ended after only one hour. It didn't even go the full hour and a half for public input. I arrived at 7:15. People had already left, and it was only the cheerleaders for going ahead and recklessly turning this, the public's money into an unneeded, unnecessary expansion, especially reckless at this time when the interest rates are so high and the Federal Reserve has said that they are going to reduce interest rates by two percentage points by the end of 2025. Holding off on decisions like this is the most prudent thing to do. This location is actually better, would be better served by building the jail and the justice campus right in its location. Environmental impacts have already been purchased, or done. The county owns this land outright. They should kick the CIB and the city to the curb and take back over 100% control of this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Your time's up. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good morning. Eric Spoonmore, Monroe County resident. Just a very quick addendum to the previous individual's remarks. WFIU was at the CIB meeting on Monday with a camera recording it. Joe Wren, the reporter with WFIU, was there covering the entirety of the meeting. I was there at the meeting as well, too. Not sure what happened with Katz. I know they have a busy schedule, but we did have news media there covering the story. In addition, I believe Mr. Askins as well, too, had a story about it. So just wanted to make that quick addendum.
Thank you. Anyone else who wishes to offer a public comment for an item not on our agenda? All right. Thank you all. Next item, please.
Move approval of the minutes from September 11th, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Any comments, corrections, or edits? All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes for September 11th, 2024 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Next item, please.
Move approval of the claims docket, accounts payable, September 20th, 2025. I'm sorry, 2024. I've got too many 25s going on here. Sorry.
Second.
All right. We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Miller?
Good morning. The accounts payable claims docket for September 25th, 2024 totals $9,794,932.66. This includes all emergency claims and adjustments. The payroll docket for September 20th, 2024 includes $1,528,055.35 in direct costs, and the remaining $650,554.68 were for indirect costs, for a grand total of $2,178,610.3.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
No questions, but I do want to thank Ms. Miller for sending stuff to us, like on Thursday.
Yeah.
Which you can. It gives me a lot more time to review things. I really appreciate that.
It really does help. Thank you. All right. Any public comments on approval of the claims docket? Please come to the podium in NatU Hill or raise your hand in teams. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the claims docket, accounts payable, September 25th, 2024, and payroll, September 20th, 2024, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. I will note that we've received a report from the Treasurer for August of 2024, and we have a plethora of weights and measures reports running from April 16th through September 15th, 2024. It is about the new employee getting, yes, your vest. So we appreciate getting, getting those reports. All right. So we'll move on to new business, please.
Yes. Move approval of contract with Ann Island LLC for election return services agreement. Fund name, election, fund number 1215, in an amount that would be $15,000 for the first year and $13,000 for two subsequent years.
Second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Ms. Ferris?
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here today with the Ann Island contract again. I received some questions from Commissioner Giffens, and I would be gladly happy to answer those today. Once finished with those, if you guys have any other questions, we can move forward from there.
Please. I hope you'll... So I, should I just go through my questions?
Sure.
Okay. So there are multiple things in this contract. The first was that it would provide historical voter data, and I wanted to know how far back in time it will go, and would it be for both the primary and the general elections?
So the data will go back as long as the data is available and uploaded by the county and with help of Ann Island to complete this. So as long as we have the data in our office, it can be updated. It will be primary, general, and any municipal or special elections.
So how far back will you go?
As far back as we have.
So that goes back into the 1800s?
We have some that are in public records, but we don't have all of them in CSVs.
Okay. Okay. So I wanted to know how voter turnout is estimated, and I want to know also how accurate their voter turnout estimates have been in places like Perry County, where they've been operating for at least a couple of election cycles.
So voter turnout data is estimated and generated through our voting systems. That is then converted into an easily readable and viewable format by the Ann Island software. U.S. Elections Live, the voter turnout estimate and data are good in U.S. elections as our voting systems have the correct data. So going off of the data from our voting systems will be what is used to calculate that estimate. Perry County did say that theirs goes about 1% to 2% off whenever they have their estimates.
I'm sorry. What does that mean?
So the estimate that is generated for the election, Perry County said it's normally 1% to 2%, either higher or lower than what was generated.
In terms of how accurate are the estimates? I mean, you've got to know whether or not what you get is useful to anybody. So how will your, the Election Office share election data with Ann Island LLC? And specifically, will the number of voters in each precinct be reported throughout early voting and at multiple time points on Election Day? And, yeah, go ahead.
The Election Office will actually be able to upload the data onto the server by an CSV on our own and with the help of Ann Island. They will be available during the evening, the day before, the day after, if there are any questions or help needed. Also, all the reports will be submitted, and the data for each precinct, early voting and absentee voting, will begin as soon as Election Day is ended at 6:00 p.m.
So it's not going to be throughout the day?
There will be some data that is sent out throughout the day. It's not going to be results. It'll be number of individuals who have checked in to vote.
And will it be at an individual level, saying that Penny Giffens has voted today?
No. It'll just be a number of how many people have voted throughout the day, as it is currently.
By precinct?
Yep.
May I, may I interject with a follow-up? Because this is one of the questions I have, is related to this. How is entering the, so you're not connecting the elections network with this group?
Correct.
So how is this different than using what we have available in, in the county already, which is GIS, which we haven't used? How is this different?
So this is actually quite a bit different, because with Ann Island, we're generating a CSV that goes directly to them. When we work with GIS, it's a PDF that gets submitted to them. The GI, um, sorry, the HART group that we work with will generate the CSV specifically for this company and has not generated it in the past for GIS.
Okay. So what can it be?
But couldn't they?
Yeah.
Couldn't they? Because it's a CSV file, and I actually think that GIS would prefer a CSV file.
They do prefer it, but we are not able to generate it on our own. It has to be generated by HART.
Right. But if HART can do it for one company, why can't they do it for the county? Have we asked?
I have asked. They are not responding on that comment at this time.
Wow. I'm not happy with HART, then, either.
No.
It's very worrisome.
Yeah.
I don't know why they wouldn't respond.
Yeah. I mean...
A lot of it has to do with the attack on the county server that we had.
It's a totally separate system. It had no impact at all. It's an absolutely separate network system. So that has zero, zero to do with it.
Yeah. That's just not a reasonable response in this case.
No, absolutely not.
Also, working with GIS, we have to rely on the fact that they will be there to fix things on Election Day during the primary election. Nobody was in the office to fix the GIS map that we had on our county website. And actually, at the last meeting, Commissioner Thompson, you notified us that one of the maps is not working.
That's okay. Thomas.
Thomas. You notified us that one of the maps is not working. We did not know that until after that meeting, when we went back to check it. It has not been updated currently. So how are we supposed to rely on GIS to have the data up, ready to go on Election Day, when we didn't have their help during the primary?
Did you ask for their help?
Yes, we did. Nobody was in the office. We didn't get a response until the next day.
Did you ask previously, when there would have been someone there who could have arranged it?
There should have been somebody in order for us to be able to contact if there's an issue. Same thing with TSD. If we had an issue, we could contact them, because they have a 24-hour line that we can call for the help desk.
But did you make arrangements prior to Election Day with the GIS office?
Would we have to make arrangements with Ann Island? No.
No. Answered the question.
We should not need to make arrangements for elections, since it is such a high importance.
Okay. If you did not make arrangements with GIS prior to Election Day, they don't even know that you want to do it.
How are we supposed to, we need it, when we're supposed to rely on GIS to have the information ready to go? It should be up and running constantly. There shouldn't be an issue for us to have to ask for help to get something fixed.
It is up constantly.
And it was not working that day, and there were things that needed to be updated that day that we couldn't have anybody to update, so we had to remove it. And we had to direct individuals that were voters on Election Day to the state website instead of our local county website to get the information that they needed.
I'm, I'm, I'm not happy about spending $41,000 at a time when we are struggling to pay our county employees a living wage. And so I'm really, really unhappy about the, both the response here and rationale for this.
Do you have other questions?
Yeah, I do. So at the September 11th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Commissioners, a representative from Ann Island LLC indicated that their data security is, quote, "as good as any banks," unquote. Now, banks have been hacked. We know that. So that's not reassuring to me, that their data system is as good as any banks. So if, how's their security better than the county's GIS system?
So for that, Ann Island has military-grade encryptions and security, which most banks use. Ann Island's system is on the cloud and is throughout multiple different countries. While Monroe County GIS data may be saved on county servers, Ann Island has dealt, has handled data that is much more sensitive data than Monroe County for Fortune 500 companies that generate billions of dollars. So they are certainly congenious of important information and the importance of cybersecurity.
They haven't convinced me that they're more secure than the GIS system at this point. So...
This goes back to, we just had a attack on the system in July. We also have to go back and realize that we know Ann Island will be up and ready, because it's working in eight other counties. GIS has not done this with ours, so we don't know if we show up on Election Day, if it's going to be up and running, ready to go, and the results will actually generate the way that they should on Election Day with GIS. This is their first time doing it. This is not Ann Island's first time doing it.
So I was also told in an email from the clerk that no candidate profiles would be uploaded to Ann Island's platform. I did not see this reflected as a change in the contract.
We have talked to, we have talked with Ann Island, and we have already discussed it. They said that they have already discussed it as well with the clerk, and I believe they said that all of those changes would be made, and they would ensure that they are made.
You've had two weeks to get it corrected, and it's not corrected yet.
They're waiting for this to be fixed and for us to get through with this process before they can make any other changes, because it was the contract that was submitted to you guys.
You need to submit a correct contract to us to have us sign it.
I was told that we would just come and then have this meeting. You guys would sign it, and then the change would be made.
Told by whom?
That was what we were informed by Ann Island. That was informed to them by County Attorney Molly Turner, because that's who they're working with. Same with our Comcast contract.
Okay. And you're saying that, that basically, when, as soon as you get the data to Ann Island, it will go live?
Yes.
Okay. And how quickly will the election staff get it to them?
We get the, as soon as we get the results of the election, those get immediately uploaded to Ann Island. It's loaded immediately. They said it takes about five seconds for it to be live for other individuals to review it.
Okay, and the additional money from the HAVA grant, the $25,000
Correct.
is available because Harrison County turned it down. So why did Harrison County? The county had applied for that grant, and then they pulled out. Why?
So they had internal county reasons that they chose not to contract with Ann Island. They actually chose not to do any type of live dashboard of live results in their county at all. They're not using any county resources. They're not having a live dashboard or anything. They decided as a county that they did not want a live dashboard because of how small their election is compared to ours.
And what happens when our county provides inaccurate data? We know that in 2022, on Election Night, things were not full and complete in terms of the data that was released.
Correct. All information, all results that go out on Election Night are unofficial results. We do not have official results until after the provisional ballot hearing day, which is 10 days after the election.
So how will that, how would that be presented at, by Ann Island?
At Ann Island, it shows that it is unofficial until they are transferred over to official results as what we put onto our county website. At the top of them, they say unofficial or official results.
Thank you. Sorry to hog the mic here.
No, thank you. Comment your question.
I think Commissioner Githens probably covered most of what I might have.
Ms. Turner King, would you like to offer some insight and information for us? Thank you. Thank you for coming upstairs.
You're welcome. I just want to clarify that I haven't spoken to the Island LLC. The last time I spoke to him was prior to the meeting that he presented at. I wasn't aware that there was any need to remove anything from the contract, and so I surely didn't tell them that to just move forward with this contract, and we would edit it later.
Thank you. It didn't sound right. Okay, thank you. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. You can come up to the podium in the NatU Hill Room or raise your hand on Teams.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. My name is David Henry. I'm a resident of Van Buren Township. Today, I appear in my capacity as Chairman of the Monroe County Democratic Party and also a committee member of the Indiana 9th District Democratic Central Committee. First, I want to preface my comments by saying that I appreciate the division of power and labor in the county that a ministerial office duly elected by the people has a right to its discretionary budget to make proposals on how to spend their budget as they see fit with, of course, county commissioners' consent. But I ask today that the commissioners consider the election integrity and voter integrity questions in the contract for the purchase of Ann Island that has been proposed for the general election of 2024. I have several concerns I'd like to share today. First, I already covered my procedural question, but here's the bottom line. We are 41 days from a consequential presidential election cycle, and I can't in good conscience support any applications, whether it's the county's arc GIS system or a third-party application, being attached to the voter system that lack a decent data service agreement within that contract, have been independently vetted and by experts, and leave any conflicts of interest as a competitive RFP process was never considered because of the HAVA grant subsidy, which I hope is not an abuse of the HAVA grant program in our state. I have my suspicions and intend to speak to cybersecurity experts on the data security risk involving any platforms connected to our voter system in our community. I'd like to speak about the cybersecurity and how it affects election integrity. I work as an IT project manager in consulting with the federal government by my day job. I also have attempted to develop similar ERP-based tools to extract data and insight from our own partisan systems that we use in the Democratic Party in 2020. So I'm aware of the opportunities that exist to crunch data that's brought into an ERP system and compare it to other data sets to provide insight through tools like Power BI, which is what generates the output that would be in the application. So my first red flag is, I have is what organizations like the proprietor are doing with public data and what reassurances are in a contract from a cybersecurity perspective that that public data is not being manipulated in ways that are produced out. That is not stated in the agreement that you have, and minimally, a data service agreement should say such things. It doesn't tell us about the confidentiality, the integrity, or the accessibility of the data being scraped from the Hart Intercivic system, which, by the way, and I think has already been brought up in comment here today, the party and the local media have been told over the years that Hart Intercivic cannot produce the CSV file for us to consume. We get a PDF file. Local media and state party have had to convert that to OCR and try to consume that data. And so if there's an API key or some Excel sheet format that we can get, I want to know about that, obviously, as well to help us with our party work. So I find that a little frustrating as a party chair. I am concerned about the lack of detailed information on data protection practice and security controls to ensure that the confidentiality and integrity of the data is protected. I'm also concerned about the use of the Help America Vote Act grant to subsidize a purchase of an app that really doesn't affect the voting system in any way. And as we just heard, if it is reporting out precinct data that has a plus or minus 2% in real time on Election Day, we're not a vote-center county, which means if someone goes to their precinct location and they feel like they've got a long wait, that may shill the vote in this consequential election cycle. If we were a vote-center county and you could go to another location to vote that day, this might be a very useful app. But we have reorganization next year. We do not have elections next year. Slow-rolling this opportunity, which may be a great resource for us, but would be really worth looking at. But the bottom line is while maybe other counties, rural counties with very small budgets have adopted this technology, we're Monroe County. We're the 11th largest county in the state with over 100,000 eligible potential voters in a highly consequential election. Thank you for your time.
Your time. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Pearl Vannard, and I'm an IU student. I've lived in Monroe County two years now. And I just wanted to say the accessibility part of it, as an IU student, having a live dashboard that's been tested for the last eight years would be super beneficial for IU students. I work on voting rights and voter education at IU, and students want accessibility. We're visual learner, most young people are visual learners, and to have something that's been tested and we've seen before would put a little more confidence in the IU students and maybe having a greater IU turnout on something that can be trusted and understand it better than something that hasn't been tested. That's all I have to say. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Oh, Ms. Turner King, you're welcome to comment as well. Thank you.
Well, I'm not going to make a public comment, but I do want to make sure that the commissioners had the opportunity to see an email that I sent last night. I checked with the SBOA because there was some concern on how we would document or report to the federal government the expenditure to Island LLC because HAVA is a reversible grant. Typically, the expense is made, and then we get reimbursed, and I'm not exactly sure how the vendor has the $25,000 now. SBOA guidance was that they were going to check with their federal audit specialist, and then they indicated that their recommendation is, since the $25,000 has already gone to the Island LLC, the county would include it in their financials, but would include the $25,000 as a reconciling item in the schedule of expenditures in the federal grant. But they also indicated that they would be talking to the Secretary of State on how the HAVA grant is structured itself because it's kind of not like any other state grant or federal grant that the county has seen.
Could you explain the $25,000, please?
Well, I will attempt to. Somehow, the island, as they indicated when they were here, already has the $25,000. They got that from, originally, the $25,000 that the Island LLC has was from a grant from Harrison County. Harrison County, according to the Secretary of State, never entered into contract with them, and so I don't know how they already received the money. But they have the money. And I reached out to SBOA because the concern was our entire grant is for $60,000, and I don't remember the exact amount, but it's roughly $60,000. But we're not going to make that much expenditures because Island LLC already has $25,000. So I was checking with the SBOA to see how we needed to report this use of federal grant funds.
Got it. Okay, okay. I wasn't sure which $25,000 you were talking about. Okay. Oh, my goodness. Any other public comment on this item? Oh, I do see someone online. TC? I don't know who TC is, but that's the first one I see. And TSD, can you unmute? I'm going to have to get on Teams because I can't.
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you. Please give us your name and county residence.
Tron Enright Randolph. It says Tron sells, so Monroe County Surveyor. I was not. Yeah, I'm hoping I'm able to be heard. Okay. I wasn't planning on making comment, but there was some discussion going back and forth, and since the GIS Division is within the surveyor's office, I just wanted to make it very clear that, you know, we are here to work in a cooperative effort, and, you know, as we move any project forward, you know, we can figure out certain logistics. But I just really want to make the point that, you know, we are here willing to assist and work with. I think you're talking about two different types of services being provided. I do strongly believe that it is the clerk's decision as far as which way she wants to move her office, but due to some of the discussion that just took place, I just wanted to clearly state that, you know, we are here to provide assistance, work collaborative, and figure out logistics to address any of those concerns of why or why not our GIS Division can support the clerk's office. I just really felt like I wanted to make that comment. I don't think the GIS should be the linchpin here in the discussion. I think to Dave Henry's point, you know, we need to really look at this and build out a program, and we hope to do that. And if this is something the clerk wants to move forward with, that's her discretion. And now it's your discretion if you want to support the services. But I felt like the GIS Division got dragged into this in a way that I didn't wholly believe was 100% accurate. Not saying that those issues did not exist, but when you're dealing with technology and some uncertainty, you have to work very collaborative, and you have to build the foundation. You have to build the workflow, and you have to understand the logistics. So if there are things that are needed in a very timely manner, we have to understand that those are needs and, you know, plan accordingly for them. So thank you. Again, I wasn't planning on speaking today, but I felt like I needed to.
Thank you so much, Mr. Enright Randolph, for Surveyor. Sorry, you came up as TC on our, on our team, so sorry about that. Thank you. We have someone at the NatU Hill Room, and then we'll go to Mr. Ellis next. Mr. Davis.
Hello, yes. Thank you for your time, and thank you, Mr. Enright Randolph, for presenting your input on the abilities and the desire to assist with the GIS information. I think that it is premature to make a decision to fund such infotainment at this time until we understand more fully what the transparencies are with Ann Island. I suggest that if IU would like to have a purchase, a contract with them to provide election information same day, I think that would be wonderful for the students to be able to have that. But for us, the county, the taxpayers, we need to conserve our funds. This year is a very important election. However, just even considering funding subsequent years of this is, I think, is again premature. We need to, if anything goes forward, it needs to be reevaluated on a year-by-year basis. The taxpayer has many high-priority things. This information will come out, no matter what, the following day after the election, and it's going to be, have more veracity than anything that Ann Island will be able to provide. Ann Island, or it is stated here, "local vote race by precinct time, total counts, and total, and voter turnout estimates, estimates based upon the information provided from current and previous elections." This is a brand-new election. This is a brand-new day. We cannot just rely on past statistics to inform the public what is happening at this time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ellis is on Teams. If you could promote him, and, well, he's already promoted. If you can get him to unmute, we'll hear from Mr. Ellis.
All right. First of all, I want to, Commissioner Githens, her questions I thought were very spot-on. And I would recommend approving this contract, once those questions and once the contract is changed, to reflect, as Chairman Henry had said, his, some of these data security issues. I would love to, as, again, as Mr. Henry had said, get a CSV or Excel sheet as party chairman. That would help us quite a bit, being able to get that data in that format. So I'm concerned about the disconnect with HART with that. But I do think from other counties, the track record for Ann Island and the fact there's already a pretty much a $25,000 credit that if we can go ahead and move forward with this this year, this would be a good opportunity for us. And finally, in, when it comes to what I'd call the general buzz of the electorate, I do understand that the cybersecurity attack, it's apples and oranges compared to this system, but I don't know if John Q. Public understands that, and I think there may be some concern that the county is still vulnerable, and having a third party, you know, handling that data and putting it out there may alleviate some of those election concerns. That's just my input on that, and I think the comments from everybody has been great. But I do think the contract does need to change and reflect that before anything is signed.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Appreciate you. Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Come up to the podium in NatU Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Come back to my colleagues for any additional questions or comments that you may have. Commissioner Jones?
Yes. When we discussed this before, it was a three-year contract. I assume that hasn't changed?
Correct.
Yeah, I have big problems with signing a three-year contract for this. I do think that we might be putting our GIS department under an awful lot of pressure to come up with a system like this in six weeks, five weeks, whatever it is, until the election.
Forty-six days.
Thank you. I'm not running this year, so I'm not counting. I, I do believe our GIS department could easily handle this and do it well, but of course, it would have to be with the cooperation from the clerk's office. And we would want to be assured of that. A three-year contract just doesn't make sense to me at all in a situation like this. We don't really, we, we need more. We need to see what they can actually do before committing ourselves to three years. And I think that while I understand people truly do want to see election results as quickly as possible, as you said, they are not official until 10 days after the election, and that's when we truly know what's going on. I think that unfortunately, it would not make sense to sign this contract. I seriously hope that the clerk's office can work with GIS and put something together for the next election. There is not an election next year, which is some of my concern over this contract with there being no election next year. I know you said that there's work that needs to be done, but in the past, that's always been done in-house. And I don't see any reason why that can't continue.
One thing I do want to touch on is with working with the GIS department in the surveyor's office, we absolutely enjoy working with Tron. We work with Tron on so many different things, including me working with one of his office members when I very first started working with the county on creating new and updated precinct maps so that they are easily accessible by precinct maps so that they are easily accessible by voters, not just online, but also on phones. They created an app for that so that they can use it on their phones, and it's not a hassle. We have nothing against the GIS office. What we have against is making sure that this is up and ready to go, to be as transparent as possible for the voters in such a large election. This could possibly be a history-making election. That's why we want to go forward with this, to ensure that there is that transparency, so that it is more accessible for more than just the ones who have been voting for years, but also for our new generation of voters that are coming in. Me being part of that younger generation, I see the need for having visuals. I see the need for having a different format of the results. Currently, our results are just pieces of paper that have numbers on it. Having that visual of a grid that actually shows who's leading or who's farther behind helps them, as well as it helps also our older generation of voters who have a hard time with seeing and describing the numbers.
Okay, thank you. Were, were comments here? And I didn't, so if we have questions, we can ask? Did you have something else that you have to tell us?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the three-year contract is because that's the end of the clerk's term, and she had decided to do that to make it less difficult for us having to come back each year to take more time away from you guys.
Thank you. Commissioner Giffens?
I, given the fact that we don't have some of the data protection and security issues written into the contract, I'm not in favor of this contract.
I agree. And you talk about transparency, and I think Mr. Henry's point about a data service agreement, issue of confidentiality, that needs to be addressed. Help, have a, is Help America Vote Act. Getting a graph of election results on your phone is not helping people vote. It is, because it comes after the election is over. We need to help people vote. That's ADA compliance, that's ensuring people can get to the polls on Election Day, ensuring people know what's going on, which is the next item on our agenda. But I don't see election results as helping America vote. But that's me. I think it's interesting that we have both party leaders locally who say, say no. I think that is probably one of the most unusual things I've heard in a while. And, and that makes us pay attention. I would ask Ms. Turner King, if you would be so kind as to talk to Hart and to see why we can't get a CSV file if our name is not Ann Island, but our name is Monroe County Government and we're using their system. If you wouldn't mind doing that, we would certainly appreciate it. Thank you. All right.
Can I make one comment?
Please.
William Ellis did not say no.
He said not now. He said the contract's not done. And we also, I'm not comfortable signing a contract that's not complete, that's not updated. So that's the other issue. Okay. So with that, are we ready for a vote? All those in favor of approving an island election return services agreement signify by saying aye? All opposed, say no.
No.
All right. So that's decline zero-three. You're welcome to get back if you get another contract. And we can have this discussion again. But I think if we can get those CSV files, I think we can get this done. So, thank you. All right. Next item, please.
We have approval of the Comcast Agreement for General Election Commercial Fund Name, Election Fund Number 1215, in an amount of $6,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Ms. Ferris?
We are two weeks away from early voting and 46 days away from Election Day. Last week, we sent out just under 2,000 ABS by mail ballots. Also, we have been averaging 150 to 200 voter registrations per day. We had budgeted 6K for both elections for the commercial, although we, not as planned, we were not able to have commercials during the primary election. These commercials are not only aired on cable, but also streaming services. 50% of Monroe County residents either have cable or streaming services at this time. More spots will be aired over cable and streaming services with the 6K, which will be beneficial since we are expecting a higher volume of voters and can take away from the Election Day turnout by having take, people, individuals take advantage of early voting for this possible history-making election. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask, and I, and I'm glad that you made time for me today.
All right. Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Not at this time, thank you.
Commissioner Giffens?
Yeah, we've, we've been back and forth on, on this particular thing, too. I think that the people that need to hear this the most are the folks that have, either are occasional voters or are new voters. And I'm concerned that they are not plugged into the streaming services that Comcast is, is feeding into. I know personally, I see one of the executives here from Smithville telephone, we have Smithville, and we use a streaming service. None of those are on the list that Comcast provided in the, the stuff that, the additional things that you sent me that are not part of the packet. I do want this out, but also I want to note for the record that we do not have attachment A, and we don't know what that is.
Ms. Turner King? I bet you know.
I do. Exhibit A, it was supposed to be the description of the commercial. The vendor was able to provide me the description this morning, and so I can add that language to exhibit A. But it will just identify what the commercial that Comcast edited was.
Is the commercial done?
Comcast was the individuals who edited the commercial this year, or this election cycle.
So it is done?
It is done.
Okay.
Previously, in the primary, the vendor who had edited the commercial in the past was unavailable.
Right.
We offered an alternative vendor, but that didn't come through.
Right. Excellent. Well, they declined it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry. Oh, no, no. We're good. Just asking. Follow-up on your question. Do you have anything else?
No.
Okay. I, yeah, I, I agree that I think we can do better, and we've got a couple of years to work on that. I'm happy to get this done, because anything, any information we can get out is good information, right? And that's helpful. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Davis?
Hello, thank you. I believe that this sets us up for possible legal action for unequal treatment under the law if the county goes ahead and prioritizes a provider like Comcast to, to, to fund their commercial. They, if they have already produced this commercial, why don't they just air it on their own, as a service, on their own? You know, it would be nice to see something like that take place. I personally do not have cable. I know that many people don't have cable. Some of these funds that, of the $6,000, could be spent in other ways to raise awareness. Maybe there should be, maybe some of that money could be allocated to other media sources so that they could produce their own commercials. We don't even know what the script is for this. And with that, I encourage you to not award this $6,000 contract. I think that we need to step back and think how we are giving greater equity to other media sources who can probably do as well, if not have more of an impact in the outreach. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. All right. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Comcast Agreement for General Election Commercial signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes three, zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
We have approval of Bloodsow, Riggar, Cooper, and James Land Surveying and Civil Engineering Service Agreement. Fund names, County General and Parks Non-Reverting. Fund numbers, 1,000, 1178, and 1179, in an amount not to exceed $16,000.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and we have a second. Do we have anyone here from Park?
Yes, John Robertson's here.
Great.
Sorry, stepping in for Kelly today. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So last Wednesday, our park board approved the service agreement with Bloodsow, Riggar, Cooper, and James to perform a staked survey of the Huntington property, the amounts not to exceed $16,000. You'll notice in the proposal, each parcel is being surveyed individually. This is primarily for future grant opportunities. Each individual parcel can be used for the purpose of matching for multiple grants, as opposed to using the entire property for one grant match. The proposal also includes staking of the property perimeter with PVC T-posts. A property this size, near areas of development, we feel like a recorded survey is probably our first order of business, a very important thing to do. I should note, though, that we don't, the property has not been officially transferred to the county yet. So this survey would not happen until that, of course, happened. But if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
This seems quite straightforward.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm really excited about this property.
Well, I think the public doesn't even know about this.
I know.
So can, can you tell the public what, what has happened?
Yeah, sure. So we, I, to be honest, wasn't sure whether it had been announced in a public meeting or not. But Nancy Huntington, a very generous Monroe County resident, donated a large parcel, approximately 400 acres, 409, I think, of land to Monroe County for the purpose of recreational use. So the property is located off of East Morse Pike and State Road 446. Certainly, lots of potential opportunities long-term, but we're still in the process of making the property transfer and acquiring the, the property.
Great. That is...
So yes, all exciting.
Yeah, this is exciting and fantastic, and what a wonderful, wonderful, generous gift to the residents of Monroe County.
Yes.
That is amazing.
And, and it gives us a park area on the east side of the county, which we have been lacking.
Yes. Yeah, absolutely. It's really exciting.
We can do so much education.
I know.
We can have a community garden.
I know.
I know Ms. Purdy wants horse trail, but, you know.
Dog park. I'm saying dog park. I'm just saying dog park. Anyway, we'll get you the wish list. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Very exciting news, and we're thrilled on behalf of the whole county. That's, that's a really great thing. All right. Let's see if there is any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the Bloodsow, Riggar, Cooper, James Land Surveying and Civil Engineering Service Agreement signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Easy for me to say. All right. Next item, please.
We have approval of Indianapolis Crime Scene Services LLC On-Call Service Agreement for Hazardous Materials Removal. Fund Name, County General. Fund Number, 1,000, in an amount of $375 per hour, not to exceed $12,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second, and we have Mr. Kreider joining us. Hello.
Good morning, Commissioners. Richard Kreider, Building and Fleet. Whoops. Okay.
I hope you didn't spill your water on this beautiful carpet.
And I did it anyway. All right. This request is to approve the cleanup contract with Indianapolis Crime Scene Services LLC for hazardous materials cleanup and disposal in the amount of $375 per hour with a three-hour minimum per call-out and an amount not to exceed $12,000. The not to exceed may only be amended in writing by the county commissioners. This proposal will increase the ability to address hazardous materials slash public health hazards outside of the maintenance department's scope in a timely manner as required.
All right. Thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
No, it seems like the right thing to do for public health.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes, we have seen the need for things like this. So, yeah, thank you for doing this.
Yeah, thank you for working on this. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Seeing none, all those in favor of approving... Oh, there is one.
Hello, thank you. Yes, this is a necessary item for us to protect our community. However, what I would like to know is when does the billing at 375 per hour start? Does it start when the, when the company jumps in their vehicle from Indianapolis, or does the billing start on-site, once they reach the location? We, we need to know the particulars in this contract so that we can make sure that it is one that is efficient and fiscally responsible for our county. Thank you very much.
That's a great question. I, and I, we have that language in a previous contract, and I, and I think I can find that. And I hate to answer it without having it in front of me, you know? I know there, we have specified cleanup times, but I, I just don't recall if it...
Travel time was...
Yeah, travel times included.
Yep. It was different. I remember that. Thank you. Any other public comment on this item? Did you have some? You turned around. I didn't know if you had.
No.
I was just gonna say, historically, we have scheduled the actual time where they came, so we paid, they were supposed to be here at 8:00 or 9:00 AM, and they were gonna work till 4:00 or 5:00 PM with a, with a break in the middle. So it never, historically, it has never included travel time.
Yep. All right. Anything else? All those in favor of approving the On-Call Service Agreement with Indianapolis Crime Scene Services for Hazardous Material Removal signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries three, zero. Thank you. Next item, please.
Thank you.
We have approval of Resolution 2024-34 to 2025 Monroe County Government Holidays.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. We have Ms. Purdy.
Yes, good morning. This is kind of some housekeeping, but for some clarification for staff. Next year, there, there is no election. However, there's one floating holiday that can be used by staff throughout the course of the year. And the reason for that is the, the Christmas holidays, that Christmas Eve is actually on a Wednesday, and then Christmas is held on Thursday. And it was determined that only a handful of employees would actually want to return to work on the Friday post the holiday system. So we proposed it, that it's already, that that day's already provided to everybody. And it helps to ensure that some people, what would end up happening is, most people would take that day off for the most part on, as their holiday, as the floating holiday, and you would still have people who would have to come in, and maybe didn't want to. So this takes that whole out of play.
Thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Just thank you for thinking of that.
Commissioner Giffens?
I'm, I'm glad that we're still providing at least one floating holiday.
Yeah. Yeah, it's good. Yeah, it's just with the way that the holidays are, are falling, that it is something that, that we can address this way. It makes sense, because if half the people are here, the other half aren't gonna get their work done, because the other half aren't here. I get it.
And probably the demand from the public is going to be fairly low, too.
Yeah, I would imagine so. All right. Okay. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. Okay. Seeing none, all those in... All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-34, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you so much. Next item, please.
We have approval of the purchase agreement for the Justice Complex in North Park. Fund name, Edit Band and Edit. Fund numbers, 4816 and 1112, and an amount of $11,375,000.
Second?
We have a motion, and we have a second, but I am -- well, let's go ahead. We had some 11th-hour information come in, and it was really almost the 11th hour. Mr. Cockrell?
Well, yes, and I think what I would just begin with is this is a contract for the purchase of an area of North Park. I think the map's in the packet. This has been -- we have gone through two appraisals with this project. The amount is the average of those two appraisals. The, let's see, the purchase doesn't include -- this purchase agreement doesn't include language that would -- that contemplates that before the -- this is for the jail and the Justice Complex. I think that's pretty self-evident, that this -- that in order for the jail to be used, there would at least be bids out and accepted for the construction of the courts. That's at the request of the seller. I think that if you want me to go into the new last second news--
Please, what was the new information?
Well, yesterday, I received information from people who supply sewer to the area, the City of Bloomington and South Central Regional Sewer District. The City of Bloomington gave us a number for $875,000 for infrastructure required improvement for the Vernal Pike site, which is different than this site. And so, with that, it would also include the requirement for a voluntary annexation for that property, which has some continuity requirements and things like that that would have to be worked out with. South Central Regional Sewer District, which would not have that requirement, indicates that the North Park facility could indeed, at a rough back-of-the-nap and don't hold him to it estimate of $2 million, could be used to serve that Vernal Pike property as well. So, those are -- that's information that I received late yesterday.
Okay. So, previously, we heard from the City of Bloomington that they could not provide sewer unless that property and property laying between that property and the boundary of the City of Bloomington would have to go through voluntary annexation. And that was obviously not something that made us very happy, but certainly, asking property owners to be voluntarily annexed to the city really didn't make me happy, and it was an opportunity for something to go wrong, because if somebody said no, the whole project gets scuttled. But now, we have this wrinkle that potentially, we could run sewer service from Vernal Pike to the package plant at North Park for $2 million. And now, I don't know. I feel like, for me, I'd like to continue this item, because we need to get some more information. We have not yet met with residents in the area, and we have to do that as soon as possible. And obviously, we need to verify that sewer connection is possible and how ballparky that number is, and hopefully get some more information on that. And since we haven't done any of the actual on-the-ground reviews of that land, I would like us to move forward with that as soon as possible, because every delay is money, too. And so, we have to figure out if it's possible to actually run that sewer line, but also how long it would take, and all of these other elements would have to be addressed. But that would be my preference, and I would like to hear from -- we'll start with Commissioner Giffens. What would you like to do?
I would like to go ahead with this. I would like to go ahead with this agreement. We have gotten emails from people. I've read every single one of them. These are people who are -- who live in the Ellisville area, saying that they oppose the jail going into North Park. I want to point out that North Park is not Ellisville. It's just not. And how this kind of facility is built will also make a big difference in terms of the appearance of it. I don't know about the rest of the residents in this county, but I've -- I used to go over to Columbus, Indiana on a fairly frequent basis, when my kids were doing sports and oral things and stuff like that. You're not even aware of the jail as you drive past it. Same thing in Martinsville. I know people that drive on 39 as they go up to the airport. They're not even aware that that's a jail that sits off to the north side of 39. It's because of the way things look and how the -- just the general feel of it. So, I think that we can, in looking at the kinds of things that DLZ has already done and the pictures that we've seen as we went out and talked with people in the community, I think that we can put in buildings that are very nice and very acceptable. Several of the emails refer to the fact that they would like to see North Park developed for retail. Steve Kreider, when he was out in Ellisville at one of the town meetings that we had out there, indicated that he had attempted to do this several times in the past, but he was unsuccessful. And so, I don't think it's -- I don't think we should expect him to wait to have that done. That's not what this is about, because he did try to do that, it was unsuccessful. I don't -- I know that there have been issues raised about safety also. I want to know if there are people who are uncomfortable walking around downtown Bloomington, because that's where our current jail is. I don't think people feel unsafe down here. So, I don't think that that should really be an issue. One of the people also commented on the fact that she thought that with 100 acres, we should be able to find 25 acres to build this on. Well, we have to worry about buildable acreage, not just total acreage. And we also have to worry about the proximity of the two buildings. We can't -- and according to what we saw from our friend from DLZ a couple weeks ago, that's gonna be difficult to have the proximity that we want on Vernal Pike. That was just a quick look-through on his part, that's not definitive. We've been criticized, the three of us, multiple times for the fact that the decision came down that we had an unconstitutional jail 15 years ago. Now, we're being criticized for trying to build one, is what it feels like, and to get that problem sorted out. And I think that that's kind of unfortunate. But the emails also said that we're rushing to make a decision here. Far from it. Far, far, far from it. This has not been easy. We've looked at multiple sites. We have been turned down by the City of Bloomington for one of the sites that we wanted to put just inside the city limits on the south side here. We've attended training, three-day training. We've visited several other jails, both inside Indiana and in other states. We, I think, have been very deliberative, very thoughtful. We've listened to experts. We've talked to multiple, multiple people. In essence, we have not rushed this process, and every single delay has both a fiscal cost to it and a human cost to it. Human cost in terms of the people who are in that facility and to the staff that works there. And these are wonderful staff. I mean, I just have so much -- they're just great. So, we also have to be concerned if we wait, and it will take months to get these kinds of things sorted out in terms of the additional talking to residents and doing the kinds of assessments that we would need to do. We have to consider the fact that our current Justice Center, the building is failing. And what do we do if, say, the elevator dies? Do we have to take every single inmate that's there and farm them out to other facilities and then transport them back and forth as they come for their hearings? I just think that delay is the wrong step to take at this point. So, I'm going to be voting in favor of this item.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I really agree with everything that Commissioner Giffens just said. And I would like to add that it's obvious that there's really no one in the county who is dying to have a jail put in their midst. We have looked at other locations where the people who might be affected by it lived much closer than any of the people in Ellisville. The one single location we found where there was only one person who was in proximity and who was actually in support of the jail going in there was the property that was just inside the -- inside Bloomington's boundaries on the south side. And the City Council and the Plan -- City Plan Commission did turn us down unanimously for that location. We can keep on hunting for another 15 years. There's not going to be any place that everyone is going to agree is ideal. However, having said that, I do think that we owe it to people to explore further what could happen with the Vernal Pike site. I don't want to devote too much time to that, and I also want to make it very clear that I will not support anything that does not allow the jail and the Justice Center to be placed adjacently. To not do that increases the danger or the lack of safety for the jail staff, for court staff, for the people who live in the area. It would not make any sense at all to have those buildings separated. So, while I am willing to explore this further, that is a crucial item for me. Thank you.
Yeah, you both made great points. I'm -- I fear that if we don't have a bit more information, that this purchase agreement for North Park, which, by the way, I agree, is a preferable site, much preferred it is, that the issues that we are presented with by DLZ for the Vernal Pike property are enormous. And my fear is, and I think if we can get a first good review of that property done by VET, is that there are probably more carst features on that property than are already marked on the map, just looking at the contour lines on the GIS map. It is -- I don't know that those two buildings could be adjacent at Vernal Pike, and why would we do this? To do it wrong, to save money? But then, you know, if you look at the Charlotte Zitlow Justice Center, this is -- we have to have it downtown, and we have to do it as -- with the least amount of money possible, and that's what we have. We could do a lot better. And I am still thoroughly convinced that North Park is a preferred site, because of its location, because of the lack of issues with the property. It is a much better site, yes. Time is money. So, if we could work on getting an initial review of that property done with VET, I would feel better, and I think it would be able to give us that information that we need to move forward. We are agile, we are protean, we are always open-minded, and this is a very difficult balance for us, because we have this urgency, we have the pressure of repairs and maintenance on a building that is clearly failing, and at the same time, we have somebody saying, well, let's save $2 million. Well, yeah, I'd love to save $2 million, but does that put us in a property that is not going to serve this community well in 20 years? We have to make sure that we are building what we need for the future, so that the court spaces have room to be expanded if necessary, that the buildings are adjacent for safety's sake. You know, we have to have that sort of drilled-down information. So, I don't know when we will continue this. I'm not going to put a date on the continuation, because I think it's -- we need more information, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we continue this purchase agreement for North Park for the Justice Complex, and with the date unknown, more information needed.
Second?
Okay, so, we have a motion, and we have a second. Any discussion, any other?
Do we take public comment when we're doing this?
Okay.
Yeah, I oppose delaying it.
I understand.
And I really do think North Park is the superior one for a lot, a lot of reasons. You named some of them. I think that the road system there is better in terms of access back into town, and I still -- just the delay, the delay to the delay just worries me incredibly. One of the things that we heard from Judge Decoff recently was that, yes, they schedule people who are supposed to come for a hearing. They do that in advance, and the jail staff knows whom to, you know, have ready to come. And then, all of a sudden, maybe on a -- at 10 o'clock on a given morning, Judge Decoff will find out she's got -- she can find space for somebody to go for treatment, to be taken out of the jail and go for treatment. And so, she contacts the staff and says, please bring me Person X, and they do that. That's not gonna be possible if we have to then -- if we have a total meltdown, breakdown in our jail, and we have to shuttle people out to other jails while we're waiting for something to happen. That is detrimental to that person, when she works incredibly hard. And I just worry about things like that for every single day that we delay this.
Yeah, I see it, I feel it, you know? I feel this immense pressure to move forward, but I get it, and I so appreciate your perspective. I really do. But I feel like if we don't do the next step at least, we won't be able to -- we're going to hear that, oh, but you didn't look, but you didn't, you know? So, we have to do that, I think, in order to keep this process moving forward as quickly, hopefully, as possible. But absolutely respect, and I agree with, you know, almost everything except the we shouldn't delay. But it's really -- it's really important. This is, you know, this is the biggest decision we're gonna make in this office, and it's the most important one, and I don't want to continue it, but that's where my motion is, so. Did you want to add anything?
No, just that I -- well, yes, just that I hope that we can accomplish this as quickly as possible, because this is something we really, really need to move forward on. The human suffering that's being caused by our lack of movement is not something that should be ignored, and I certainly hope that the taxpayers aren't ignoring the fact that every delay is costing us more and more and more money.
Absolutely. Right? It's either smaller space or more money, and then once they set that tax rate, it's going to be smaller space. All right, so, I'm gonna go ahead and call for a vote on continuing to an unknown date the purchase agreement for the Justice Complex in North Park. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Aye. All right, we have a motion carrying 2-1. Thank you for your patience with us, Commissioner Giffens. I know there are members of the community who are here to talk about this. There is no need for public comment on this at this time, because we no longer have an item on the agenda, but we will certainly -- we got this out to folks in an email on Monday, those who attended the listening sessions in Ellisville, and we will certainly keep you updated. you updated as things progress. But given this very late information, it sounds like we might be able to have a work session today and talk through a contract, hopefully. Mr. Cockrell is a magician. And we can get more information as soon as we can and continue to move forward. So thank you all. For those of you who came for that, thank you for being here, and we will keep you posted. All right, so we have our next item, please. If there's a slight problem.
Excuse me, what?
There is no public comment.
But wasn't the public supposed to be allowed to comment on the proposal?
We, sir, we removed the item from the agenda, so you can, you are welcome to stay and comment on any item that is active on the agenda. We continued this item to a date unknown.
But shouldn't there have been public comment on the proposed continuance?
No. Thank you, no.
No.
There is not, we typically, and I think Robert's Rules of Order backs me up on this, motions to continue do not allow for comment. It's...
We do not take comment on that. We do not take comment on agenda items that we are changing. We do not take comment on appointments to boards and commissions and minutes. We don't take comment on that either, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, please.
Yes, there's a slight...
There's a big typo.
Yeah, yeah, well, so I'm going to read it the way I think it should be.
Thank you, please do.
Okay, so move approval of soil testing agreements with James Brown and Amber Willen. Fund name, American Rescue Plan Act. Fund number, 8950, with both not to exceed, the two combined not to exceed $50,000.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. This is for the septic agreements, the septic replacements for the ARPA programming, and I don't know which of you wishes to speak about it.
Oh, I would be more than happy. This is part of our septic program. I would just note that we met, I met with the septic and auditor staff yesterday, and we have over 50 applications received. Of those, we have nine that are pending auditor review. Of those that have gone through the auditor's review, I believe there are 46 that would be eligible for this. And I think only three to this point have been deemed ineligible, and that's because the assessed value of that home was over $300,000. So we are working through this. And so when an application, and I say that when an application comes in, then we have the health department review to make sure it meets the other qualifications, which is that it's either over 35 years or it's failing. Once that occurs, we want to have a soil scientist go in and check locations for where the new septic system could go. That's where this contract comes in. These are two different contracts with two different of those soil testers. They are not to exceed $25,000 each. However, each individual septic soil test, you know, when they do that, is estimated to be 500. And if it's going to be more than 500, then they've got to get approval from our septic people. That may be that one of the holes was bad and they need to do another one. So that would be an interaction between those two. So that's kind of where this fits into that program.
Great, thank you. Comments, questions? Commissioner Githens?
Clearly, this is something that folks in our county need, and it also has real health implications, so I compliment you for coming up with this program to help people.
Well, I wouldn't say I came up with it. This is kind of an offshoot of what the great friends of Lake Monroe folks are doing with their 519 grant, and we're all aware as Stormwater board members about the importance of septic cleanouts and septic replacements, and it is vital for our environment. And we know, for example, the Bean Blossom watershed is also significantly hindered by pollutants from septic. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I consider this to be one of the most important projects that we've taken on with our ARPA money. And it's not only incredibly important for human health, it's also extremely important for environmental health. And I just really hope as many people as can will take advantage of it and that the money will go far enough to really clean up a lot of this problem in our county.
Yeah, that's a great point. Mr. Cockrell, are we still accepting applications?
We are still accepting applications.
But we probably have enough, we probably have enough applicants that we're going to run out of money.
Correct. Under the current, we don't know, right? Because we've only actually had, I think we've had four agreements out for it, and those total, there are roughly 20,000 each, so they're between 60,000 and 80,000 total out on that. You know, but we don't have the, you know, I don't know if the property owners are going to get us the invoice, the two quotes and all those kinds of other steps there. I think our thought, the thought we had at the meeting yesterday is that we were going to give an update at the council and commissioner ARPA meeting on the 9th. And if there is additional funds available, I think we'll be able to demonstrate that we probably could use them. So, I mean, the hope was that would still be part of that conversation.
Great, thank you. Any other?
I hope some of the people around Lake Lemon are applying, given the problems with E. coli in that lake.
Yeah, and that sewer project, mainly in Brown County has been halted apparently, so, yeah, there's some serious issues there. Let's see if there's any public comment on this item. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Mr. Davis, did you want to comment?
Hello, yes. I would like to make comment and clarify to the public that the soil testing that is proposed to be done is for the North Park area in the...
No, it's not.
It's not.
That is a typo in our agenda. It is soil testing for the septics that are in the queue to be replaced using ARPA funding, and that's all throughout the county. So it's a typographical error in the agenda that has not been corrected yet.
So I read what was, I mean, what I stated was the correct...
Read into the record is the correct information.
Thank you. I just would like to state that it looks like there'll be two awards of soil testing for a total of $100,000, not to exceed $100,000.
No, each individual that is in this contract has a not-to-exceed amount of 25,000. For the total of two people is 50,000.
And I might be able to maybe clarify. What we want to do is, we want, when somebody has, when we determine that someone has the capacity to be allowed for, to be part of this program, we want to cover the costs related to replacement of their septic system. So one of the upfront initial costs is they have to do soil sampling to determine where the new field can go, and you need to do that before you can get quotes for replacement of the system. So, right, so this is a contract with two individuals, and we're doing with two because we don't want scheduling to slow down these people's capacity to figure out where the next septic system can go. And so they will go to the property owner's property, do the soil testing, and my understanding is that it's three different borings in the area where they think it's going to work. And then once that gets through, and if it's deemed that the soil is appropriate for a septic system, then they'll go back, then they'll go to the property owner and say, hey, now go get two quotes for replacement of your septic system, bring it to us, we're going to review them, make sure that the quotes would, that the end results of those quotes would comply with our rules and regulations, and then we would take the lowest quote given that would so comply. And so this, this is actually, we don't expect all $50,000 to be spent from these two contracts. We think if they were doing 40 of them, you know, 40 times 500 is what, 20,000? 20,000? So I think the 25,000 total is what our expectation would be spent at the most for this program. I hope that helps.
It does help tremendously. I think this is a responsible use of taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you. And depending on the soil, it will tell the installer what kind of system is appropriate as well, and there are different systems, so...
And we have professionals who work in the health department that can answer that question. But I'm not that...
Angie knows about septic. I do, too. I do, too. All right. Okay, so, awesome. All those, do we have any other public comment? Anybody on teams? I didn't see anyone. Okay, okay. All those in favor of approving the soil testing agreements with James Brown and Amber Willen signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. All right, we have three planning ordinances plus the other contract for the jail. So do we want to take a 10-minute break? Or do we want to push through?
I was going to ask if we could do the contract with, for the jail before we do the three planning things.
Sure.
I think that's going to be relatively quick and then take a break after that?
Okay, okay. So planning, just so you know, I know you're watching, we're going to, we can move up item K on our agenda. For those of you on the website, this is called the agenda item.
Potential.
Potential agenda item. It's listed under our, it's so confusing.
We added it late.
But it is there. And so are you okay with moving this item up?
Absolutely.
You're all right with that?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll take that as a consent to do that. Let me get back to open this, potential agenda item is what it's called. And if you could go ahead and make a motion, Commissioner Githens?
Sure. Move approval of an agreement with comprehensive correctional care for Monroe County Correctional Center Medical Services. Fund name, county general. Fund number, 1,000, in an amount of $1,536,616.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. And who would like to speak about this contract today? It is hairy, it is 15 pages long. Okay.
Good afternoon. Let me see if I can save us some time here.
Not there yet, but go ahead.
I'm sorry?
It's not afternoon yet, but go ahead. Just feels like it.
My belly tells me it is. Just want to talk about a few things real quick in reference to ACH. And we had some issues with staffing, communication, consistency. We were shorted some hours. There was incredibly high turnover. So we voiced those concerns with our contract, medical service, and we began to look at other options. One of the biggest reasons that we did that was in our current contract with ACH, they offered 144 hours a week. They increased that total cost from 1.6 to 2.1 million dollars. And that was primarily predicated on the fact that they moved from RNs to LPNs to RNs, I'm sorry. And that obviously is a higher cost. So what we were able to do is talk to a couple of other companies, and one that really stuck out utilizes LPNs. They came in at the aforementioned number at 1.5. They, this contract is already funded in terms of the number. We're looking at a cost-saving measure here. So that's pretty much, that's it.
Great, thank you so much. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, I would like to know a bit more about the jail's policies surrounding medically-assisted treatment.
Okay. As of this moment, and it's, I can't speak for most jails in Indiana, but this is what we're trending towards. If somebody is already partaking in that service, has already prescribed that medication, you have that medication continued while you are in the jail. It's not Indiana code, it's not law for that to happen, but we are quickly trending towards that, and that is also something that we do here as well. This new service, this new company, we talked about how we're going to facilitate that even better in the initial conversations. So we are already well on our way towards that service.
Yeah, I would tend to think that it would help a bit with recidivism if medically-assisted treatment were actually actively offered in the jail. This is one of the most effective methods of dealing with addiction problems, and we certainly would like for people who end up in jail with those problems to not come back again.
Yes.
Commissioner Githens?
I appreciate the fact you've been proactive about this, and I hope that this contract will provide better coverage as well for people.
And I'm certain you've talked to other facilities that use this vendor and everything is great.
That's kind of highly recommended.
Great, excellent. I want to point out that I appreciate the fact that the local public health authority has access in this contract to, with your approval, of course, Commander, to provide services for inmates in this facility. So really appreciate that. Mr. Cockrell, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I would just add that I think there is one provision we're still working with the vendor about. It deals with eVerify and some insurance language.
Okay.
The vendor is indicated he just needs to talk to his insurance company, and before he is willing to do that, I think you should, your move to approval should be approving a contingent upon resolution of that issue. Otherwise, I know Justin and I have both looked at this, and we are, we agree that this is a great next step. I know that we were also talking a little bit with Kathy Hewitt about things they want to do in the facility, and we think this agreement allows that, but, you know, if we have to come back and do an addendum, we might.
Okay. So I will go ahead and amend the motion to be, the approval to be contingent on the settlement of the insurance issue to our legal staffs.
I accept the amendment.
All right, all those in favor of amending the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. All right, motion carries. Any public comments on this item? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill.
I believe that funding initiatives like this will help guarantee constitutional level of care at the jail, which is especially important until we build this new jail in its appropriate location. I support initiatives like this, and hopefully it'll carry on when we relocate the jail to the absolute best location, which is downtown where the convention center expansion is currently proposed. The justice campus is ideal there to be a beacon of justice that members of, or people in, throughout the Midwest will come to view, just like this is Washington, D.C. We build a gleaming tribute to justice, and we will get all the tourism we want from good people, not folks who are just coming in here and trying to turn Bloomington or Monroe County into circus circus. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as an FYI, the, there isn't enough space downtown to build a single-story facility. That's one of the places we looked at, not multi-floor. All right, so with that, any other public comment? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Mr. Parker, did you want to add anything?
Just one thing, just a thank you. The most important things in that facility are safety and security. And obviously, the medical care of our residents goes to both. So this came up very suddenly, and we've got hold of Jeff and Angie and let them know the urgency of that. And we appreciate the commissioners recognizing and acting on the urgency of that because there are very, very few things more important than what we just talked about right here. So I just want to say thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your comments? All those in favor of approving the amended motion on the agreement with comprehensive correctional care for Monroe County Correctional Center Medical Services signify by saying aye. Aye. Motion carries 3-0. Thank you. All right, that was item K. All right, that was item K. We're going to go back to item H, but do we want 10 minutes? Do we want to come back at high noon?
Yes.
That's only six.
Six minutes, I know. Five minutes after high noon.
Five minutes after high noon.
Great. All right, thank you, everyone. We are in recess until 12:05. I'm going to bring us back from recess. We went out to the schoolyard and played a game of kickball and tag. I was playing kickball, so that's why we had problems. Okay. All right, so thank you, a huge thank you to planning staff for their patience. We are going to continue with our next item, which is item H.
Move approval ordinance 2024-40 North Park Two Planned Unit Development Outline Plan.
Second?
We have a motion, we have a second, we have Ms. Crisilius, who was also here very late last night.
Good morning, Commissioners. So ordinance 2024, we are located in Bloomington Township, so we're going to be located next to 69 West State Road 46. So on the screen is a location map. This is a 98.6 acre parcel and is owned by Packing House Road LLC. The petitioner is Milestone Contractors, and their representative is Mr. Butler with Bynum Fanyo. Okay, so before I dive into it, just going to do kind of a summary of what we're going to be looking at today. So this is what we call a zoning map amendment or rezone, and technically, we would, we're not rezoning the entire site. So this is a proposal to amend its current planned unit development zoning. So this would be amendment one to North Park Two PUD. This is a separate PUD than the other North Park PUD properties in the same area, so it was adopted at a different time. This amendment would be to add the use mass grading with filling options. This use would be only allowed on 27.5 acres of the 98.6 acre site. And along the way, we will be looking at and reviewing a written commitment that has been drafted by the petitioner, reviewed by our county legal, and direct, with direction from the plan commission. So we're at a very good point with the written commitment, and that written commitment addresses some of the concerns that have been identified along the way. So we'll look at the, the written commitment will address limiting the area of fill, areas that will be protected for historic reasons, testing of fill material and remediation if necessary, testing of surface water and remediation of necessary, if necessary, the future use of the site, protection of environmental features, and also a high restriction of, of stockpiles if approved. So a zoning map on the screen is just going to show you that this is the North Park Two Planning and Development. It was created in 2004. It's very similar to the other North Park PUD, it has some similar language, but it was adopted separately, so technically its own, own PUD. So adjacent properties are, are zoned light industrial, we've got quarry in that area, limited industrial with some residential to the southwest. And there are no zoning overlays at all on the site. So the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan identifies this area as quarry landscape, which is a really dark brown, and also open space, which is that strip of green that goes through the site. In February of this year, the plan review committee did review this site for its compatibility with the comprehensive plan, and so staff had recommended a negative recommendation after a discussion with plan review committee. They chose to not vote on the petition, so they did not forward the plan commission any kind of recommendation. So this is a screenshot from the North Park Two PUD ordinance. That green strip that we just looked at of open space, that is pretty consistent. The North Park PUD also has areas where they are required open space. So we do see this much older map that kind of illustrates some areas that are already protected under the PUD or required to have vegetation conservation. So to get familiar, just to zoom in on the 2024 aerial of the property, so this is a former quarry site. There are approximately five quarries, open pits on site. One is kind of a more wetland situation, one is the L-hole or long hole, the term, with one open pit area being, that would be affected by the fill, and I'll get into that a little bit more. So just another view of the site, so our direction did change, so we are looking west of the property. I did visit the site, it's, it's very heavily wooded with a lot of quarry block remnants on site. It's very, because it's so large, it's very difficult to have site photos and show, so I didn't include any of those site photos, because aerials are really our best kind of understanding of the property. So the current zoning allow, has kind of two use districts, and so we're, we're mainly going to be looking at the eastern side of the site. So this petition originally started out with having, proposing this mass grading with filling operations use for the whole site, and through working with the plan commission, it's been narrowed down to only 27.5 acres, and it would be located in this use area 20 on the east side, so that would be heavy industrial. Overall, the site allows for, it's called quarry heavy industrial district and also light industrial district. And there's a variety of uses that are already permitted on site, so cut stone and stone products, pouring is still permitted. We have quite a few things from like some business and personal services, a little bit of retail, you know, wastewater treatment facility, to probably more uses in the manufacturing, mining, construction, industrial use category, so laboratories, metal fabrication, cement products, so we have a variety of those heavier uses on the site. The list just continues on. The site is a little different from the other North Park PUD where we don't, you know, there are planned roads and infrastructure for the area. Sometimes those come with the submission of a development plan for this property. Those roads are not going, the infrastructure is not going to be triggered until a land use certificate or occupancy is requested, so we're not triggering, triggering any of those, kind of the infrastructure builds that we've seen at plan commission in the past, just recently. So on the screen is a screenshot of the proposed area for the fill. Starting on this slide and through the rest of the slide, I'm going to have some screenshots that are kind of surrounded in that aqua bright blue color, and these are screenshots directly from that written commitment. So I've kind of tied in the written commitment throughout the slideshow. So this is a 27.5 acre area. This grading plan specifically shows 23 acres. We're looking at 27.5 acres for the mass that the mass grading with filling operations would be limited to. So this is listed within the ordinance and the written commitment. So they state that they will perform activities based on this fill plan and attached as exhibit A within their written commitment. So to tie it back, this is the area of the property that we're looking at. So on the screen is the aerial image with one kind of smaller-sized open quarry pit that you can see on the far east side. I didn't quite mention, but this property is accessed from North Packing House Road. It is a road that deadends into the private gravel drive for this property, and it's accessed from Vernal Pike or West 17th Street. So the petitioner's representative, Mr. Butler, did kind of provide some information about what mass grading with filling operations would be. So it would be to fill the site with excess material from other construction products, that the fill must be clean material from other projects, that would be soils and aggregates, that no asphalt payments removed from other sites would be taken here, that some concrete would be allowed, brought from the site, but the material would have to be properly sized. So onsite crushing of materials would be allowed and anticipated, that they expect would be seldom, and would be purposes of obtaining the correct sizing. The material, when being filled, would be placed, compacted, and tested per geotechnical standards for future buildability. And this is something that's come up multiple times, so they, and we will see this in the written commitment here shortly, is that, you know, they expect the site will be developed in the future, and so the fill that they place in the open pit and on that 27.5 acres is going to be done correctly and safely for future development. They again state that the material, fill material must be clean with no environmentally questionable material, and that resale of any of the onsite fill is not allowed, that would only be used for filling. It would be fill for their companies only, and there would be, there would be a fence at the driveway, so it would not, it would, there would be obstruction to, you know, couldn't necessarily just go on site, or in anticipation of, you know, maybe some trespass, they're going to be leaving the front of the site wooded, and there would be, you know, a gate at the entrance of the property. So a little bit more about the fill material. It would be the excess from construction sites. Again, they, you know, they state that's a small amount of concrete from curbs, sidewalks, or driveways may be used, but would be crushed. Hey. I think I've, I've pretty much covered this side. We're going to go into a little bit more. So here from the written commitment, number points five and eight, so they state that, you know, they anticipate that the site will be prepared and utilized for industrial development, that it will be compacted with, under the direction of a geotechnical engineer, and in compliance with all the specifications associated with future industrial development. We did, you know, talk at length with the engineer about this. We, there was discussion of, you know, requesting a timeline of when they might develop, but we are, we are comfortable with the written commitment as it is, as it stands. They were, you know, unsure of, of, of putting a timeline on when they think the property will be truly developed as, you know, the site may be for sale in the future, so unknown timing. The number, point, point number eight of the written commitment is that there was some discussion about heights of, one, the site in general, but also of stockpiles of this fill, so they did include a condition that, that temporary stockpiles would not exceed 20 feet in total height. So they go into a little bit of background about the site's environmental conditions. The site is vegetated, it contains remnants of the past use as a limestone quarry. There is a stream through the site that splits running through the property, there are multiple open quarry pits. The property does drain northwest towards the former quarry area and is a restricted development free zone. There are a few quarry ponds, and there is an offsite discharge from I-69. So this was reviewed in great detail. We were provided a CARSE study by Hydrogeology, Inc. This was provided by the petitioner. A full length can be found within the written commitment, and I'll mention that in just a moment. So the site does contain 17 sinkholes, five springs, and one sinking stream located on site. So we have spoken about this at length. They have included in the written commitment that all CARSE features delineated on this report, listed as exhibit D within the commitment, will not be filled or altered in any way. They've also included point number seven, which is that any regulated wetlands, streams, or other environmental features on the owner's real estate will be avoided or mitigated, and that they will ensure that all proper permits are obtained from IDIM or USACE. We have not identified any other permits that would be required. They have been working with other agencies, and we have seen no other requirements that we would need to include here. So the review of these environmental features on site, you know, they were reviewed by stormwater. There were, in the beginning, there were, this 27.5 acres for fill. There were, you know, a couple of sinkholes in the adjacent area, they've already adjusted those plans, and those plans have been updated within your documents before you. There's a sinking stream that's being, you know, avoided, and there's two CARSEs that are being avoided. So the fill being proposed here will be avoiding these features. So Kelsey Thetonia with the MS4 Coordinator for the county has been working with the petitioner and their representatives for quite a while now. They attended the county drainage board in November and December of 2023, as well as January of this year. They're, the drainage board is at a comfortable place in that they've stated that, you know, if this petition is approved, that they will provide the drainage board with an update during the development plan review. Ms. Thetonia is also, was involved with kind of the final drafting of the written commitment to include some more information about what contaminants would need to be regularly tested for in the fill and also surface water. So to segue into that, the written commitment, point number three, I, is addressing the concern of the fill materials. So they do state that the owner shall test imported fill quarterly at minimum during active work on site, that the fill testing plans shall be approved and enforced as part of a stormwater pollution prevention plan. This will require a permit from our stormwater program here with the county. They will be analyzing the samples for petroleum constituents. I'm not going to list off all of the items that they will be reviewing, but it is on screen and within the written commitment. The results of these tests will be sent to the county along with self-monitoring stormwater reports within 14 business days of testing, and that if contamination is discovered and levels are above applicable item published levels, that the owner will immediately notify IDIM as well as Monroe County Stormwater and conduct investigations to the source of the contamination. And if that contamination is coming from the fill or associated activities, the owner will remediate according to all local, state, and federal laws. That the quarterly testing must be conducted by a third party that's an independent company. Point number four is regarding surface water with the same type of structure, so that they will sample surface water through the site quarterly. They have identified points that they would be sampling, shown on exhibit C of the written commitment, that the surface water monitoring plan would be approved and enforced under a SWIP, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. They've identified the contaminants that they would be testing for. They, those results would also be sent to the county along with the self-monitoring stormwater reports already required. And again, that they would investigate any contamination, notify IDIM and the county, and would also remediate according to all local, federal, and state laws. The next point we'd like, I'd like to discuss is the historic preservation or the historic significance of the site. So within the written commitment, the owner has provided point number two, which states that they will not fill or develop the formerly quarried areas outlined on the attached exhibit B. So on screen is a screenshot of exhibit B. To note that this is only partially the actual petition site, this does include an area of an adjacent property that the petitioner also owns. So it's including a larger area that is offsite. They're stating that they will not develop or fill any of this area, so that includes the majority of the portion of the L-hole or long hole that's locate, open quarry pit that's on the site, a second quarry pit, and includes part of the old, one of the old mill structures that's still located on site. So this was, this was discussed at the Monroe County Board of, Historic Preservation Board of Review a few different times, and I have their final letter written to the plan commission from July, and I would like to read just portions of that to you. So they did, you know, they stated that they've heard and met with the petitioners and that they appreciated the opportunity to work with the petitioner. A point to note is that, you know, during the I-69 study period, that this parcel of land has an area that was included in the State of Indiana's recommendation preservation as a landscape district. They state that, in short, the significance of such sites in local, state, and national history is great enough that the state officials recommended that this area to be preserved as is, that they recognize that the fill level will likely exceed the original overburden of the area, but that they understand the petitioner is matching the elevation of a site to the site to the south, which to their knowledge was never discussed by Historic Preservation Board of Review. So they reviewed area, they reviewed visual materials provided by the petitioner, and that eased their concern of the view shed from the road and neighboring sites, as well as their concerns about the degree of slope. So they state that after review of the document referred as exhibit nine, which is a written commitment. The board of review gives a positive recommendation for the petitioner's plan with the understanding that the petitioner. Will immediately begin working with our board for the historic designation process for the area highlighted in green on exhibit B. So this is, that last sentence is a condition placed on this request by the plan commission. That the petitioner seek local designation for a historic preservation overlay of the same area protected. Within the written commitment. Okay. And so that was written by Mr. Devon Blankenship, member and past chair of the board of review as a representative as the board as a whole. Let's give us a little bit more context, just because exhibit B, that green area is a little hard to see. These are the features that would largely be preserved by that area. Of which would then, if this petition was approved, they would pursue a local historic preservation designation. So on the left is the L hole, long hole. And on the right, you can kind of see the red property boundaries. You can see that one of the quarry pits and also the old. Structure is also located south of offsite of the petition site. Okay. A little more context to zoom out. This is where we're located. We're south of the, you know, the commissioner's own property. So that would be the protected area. So along the way. Plan review committee, plan commission, planning staff, you know, has had concerns about, you know, the amount of fill. And it's hard to put in context when you have. What feels like so much fill going into an area or in height being increased. And so towards the end of the petition and by the final plan commission hearing. We received some of these documents that really helped us understand the elevations of the area. So on screen is just a simplified version of their, of that initial development plan. With the elevations really kind of illustrated a lot more clearly. Where it's in comparison to the site to the south. So it shows how. There's an existing elevation on the south side of the image and how they're going to kind of continue it on and then gradate. Or have a gradient out and also the elevations to the I sixty nine on ramp that's, you know, directly to the northeast. So this is another helpful, this is actually a perspective view. So on screen I do put, I did put a compass. So we are kind of looking southeast right now. The raised contours that you can see in the foreground circled in red would be the fill as totally completed, the site totally filled. So we can see that it's very well exact, close to the same elevations once completely done. And then the, the depressions right towards the, in the foreground. Of the image are those quarry pits that would be protected. And here is another view. Now we're looking kind of southwest, kind of from the I sixty nine ramp going south. Looking at the part of the field site and also matching the, in the very background of the photo, how the site would match. Elevations of the, of a, the adjacent property to the south. This image is a little difficult to see on screen, but it illustrates. The adjacent, the bottom portion of the image kind of illustrates. Adjacent property heights surrounding, you know, anywhere from eight, ten to seven. Ninety or so, and then the, the deep quarry pits that would be filled. So all the way down to seven sixty, some of those areas. So it shows that. The kind of consistency around eight, ten, eight hundred, seven ninety, and then the drop of the quarry pit. Okay. So coming, starting to come to an end. So if this ordinance was approved, the petitioner would apply for a development plan with planning. The development plan would then trigger a review by planning highway for infrastructure and roads and by the highway department stormwater program. Including the drainage board review. The petitioner would also apply for a zoning map amendment to add the historic preservation overlay to the areas shown in exhibit one. And that would be a review by the historic preservation board of review, plan commission, and then ultimately county commissioners to add the overlay. So the ordinance before you today, twenty twenty four forty has three points, which is. One, add the mass grading with filling operations as a permitted use for twenty seven point five acres of petition site. Number two, record the written commitment as shown. And number three, pursue the local historic designation for areas shown in exhibit one, the written commitment. So planning staff recommends approval of ordinance twenty twenty four forty, the north park. Number two, PUD outline plan amendment one with the condition to record the written commitment as shown in exhibit one. Does anybody have questions?
Thank you so much, Ms. Chriselius. I'll take questions first for you from Commissioner Giffens. Yeah, you, you detailed the fact that there has to be quarterly testing, which I appreciate. But there's also because of the sinking springs and the dry springs and the. The other stuff that's there that where they have to provide a twenty five foot buffer. Will those be inspected as part of? To, sorry, to ensure that. We get that buffer.
Yeah, the development plan will be closely inspected and then. Once the development plan is approved, that we would have to, stormwater would issue a stormwater grading permit. Which would include regular inspections for compliance with their plan and for the stormwater prevention plan.
And it looks like there, from some of the pictures, it looks like there was. Other debris and possibly even contaminants that were left there. Will those be cleaned out before the fill occurs? Like there's a tire in one picture and it looks like concrete stuff in another picture and.
Yeah, I'm not sure what their, their plan would be for cleaning up the, the rest of the site. The area that is proposed for fill and then the entrance as well. There's some old trash and old barn. I would imagine a lot of that area would have to be cleaned up that we would review under the development plan, simply to do what they're proposing, which is, you know. Going to have a slightly wider entrance, a gate to, you know, prohibit trespass. And then of course, you know, the actual fill operations is going to require. Meeting those geotechnical standards that they talk about. So I, I would assume that they couldn't leave the quarry blocks that are sitting around in place. I know that, I believe the petitioner is there in person, so hopefully they will be able to address that.
You had said that there's going to be some crushing of concrete. Will that create a lot of noise? Do you have any sense of that? Or should I direct that to the petitioner?
You did bring this up at the work session. You know, we do have the noise standards of chapter eight oh two that are enforceable. There will be noise caused by crushing. I did reach out to the petitioner by email, but I don't, I did not receive a response and that may have just been because of an email chain, making sure to get those documents ready. So I would like to defer to the petitioner who's, who's there with you today.
Thank you. This is very thorough. Thank you, Ms. Chriselius, and especially after last night. Yeah. Commissioner Jones.
Yes, I seem to remember, and I wish I remembered more clearly. From the, when the drainage board discussed this. There was some discussion about drainage from I sixty nine. That had been improperly done. Are you familiar with that at all?
You know, that sounds familiar from one of, yeah, it does sound familiar. Let me jump back. I see that under our site conditions that I've listed that there's offsite discharge from I sixty nine infrastructure. So I'm, do not recall the conversation from the drainage board, but I do have that listed. So. Would the interest be having the petitioner, you know, address that concern or you? Would that kind of summarize your question or?
My mic. Oh, okay, it is working. I, I can't speak for the drainage board, but. My vague memory is that something improper was done with the I sixty nine drainage. That was affecting this property. And I, well. I guess I would like to know better exactly what that situation was. But I can, I can. Well, I, I guess that's all I'm going to say for right now, since I don't have the actual information.
So there will be a stormwater review.
Yes, and, and it'll come back to the drainage board.
And we can ask the petitioner that question as well. Before we hear from the petitioner, I do have one question. The other questions I have are for the petitioner. Why isn't the, why isn't the setback from the sink, the, the cars features, the springs and the sinking spring? Why isn't it fifty feet? Since we changed our ordinance in stormwater since this was first heard.
Great question. The. The sink, the car features, we do not, is not specifically listed within the current PUD ordinance. So I believe. Their recommendation in that distance is coming from the Hydrogeology, Inc. Company Report. Which was created early of this year, if not in twenty twenty three. And that those were following the guidelines of the zoning ordinance. So it predated the, the new stormwater ordinance.
If we change that to match our current ordinance and say fifty feet. What has to happen? Is that something that? Would happen with the stormwater review anyway, or is that something we have to address in conditions?
My director can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we would probably need to address that here. As that would change the, how the development plan looks that is specifically shown within the written commitment.
Okay, thank you. Without any further quote, we can always come back with more questions if we have them for, for Ms. Chriselius. But in the meantime, petitioner, so patient. Thank you for joining us for our very long day today. I hope you had a good lunch somewhere quickly, but. Yeah, so you have fifteen minutes to tell us whatever we need to know.
There it goes. I'm Daniel Butler. I'm with Bynum, Fannion and Associates. I'm the registered civil engineer on this project and. I won't go through, I mean, handed a very, very thorough job of describing, really, we've been working on this for over a year now. Trying to make something compatible that would be approvable, that worked with stormwater, that worked with, we've. From the beginning, we've been trying to achieve all the environmental reports, cars reports, everything needed to do this responsibly. That's always been the goal because. If we don't do it responsibly, I think I talked, talked to the plan commission about this, that. We're not going to have a usable product, product in the future. And the whole goal is to have a usable product. That when we, you know, go to use this as industrial, commercial, whatever the case may be, that, you know, there'd be no environmental. Problems that come up. And so that's why there's going to be ongoing testing. We're committing to that. We're committing to ongoing geotechnical. Testing as well. We're committing to avoiding impacts, you know, through the fill of the site. It's been a challenge, but at the same time, this, I, we believe that this zone is scheduled, has been scheduled zoning wise for use. And so this provides the first step towards that use by filling in this area. It can't be used right now. And so this is just the first step in towards that. And the, the current ordinance does not allow for mass filling of the site. So we have to. That's why we have had to achieve this extra use and before you now. A couple of the questions that, that you brought up. The, the site to bring into usability and to, and correct on Commissioner Giffens question about. You would need to clean up the site. You can't leave any of those items there, large pieces of limestone, old wood, old, you know, things that. Possibly people have just left there. So yes, this would need a cleanup to make sure that. All of our testing would pass. So that absolutely, probably the first thing that we would need to do is clean up the site. Get that all out of there before we start, you know, putting in. Because we, you know, when you put it in a dump truck full of, you know, fill, you have to then go over that, compact it. And part of that, from a geotechnical standpoint, is you have to make sure what's under it is also going to hold up. And so that would be obviously removing that. So yes, we will commit to that. The second question was, yes, there will be noise with crushing onsite. Now. They're not, everything that comes to the site does not have to be crushed. It'll be some. But we put that in there and make sure that yes, there'll be some crushing onsite if there's a piece of concrete that are clean. Again, I want to emphasize that everything that come into the site would need to be tested ultimately or tested. We're committing to quarterly. So they are motivated to not bring on anything from the site that is. Some from an environmentally. You know, sensitive. You know, location that if they bring on a site, then it's going to cause them trouble, you know, with their testing. So they're motivated not to bring on anything, including no asphalt or anything like that. But yes, there'd be some crushing and we plan on adhering to the eight, chapter eight oh two standards to, for noise. So that means certainly in that there'd be nothing after work hours. So that would be probably some of the most. Concerning, you know, for neighbors if, you know, there are neighbors nearby. The, the, the last one is, we had always planned on keeping fifty feet from that stream. That goes down through the mill. So that's why we have that road starting more to the right side. And it's a continuation of the road that's out there now. So there is. The stream, yes, and the cars features, we can certainly provide a larger fifty foot radii around. Now there is a spring and there is a piece of a wetland that is kind of there now. We can't commit to that because we have to go through that. We were always, that was part of the commitment that were provided before you now. Anyway, that, that the road is already, you know, right next to those two pieces right now. So that. I hope that answers your question. If you have any additional questions with that or anything else, then let us know. AJ. Chandler with Packing House Road LLC is also here, ownership representative.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Butler? Commissioner Giffens? I, I am a little concerned about that buffer around the, the one spring that's there. I know that, that hydrogeology indicated that two of the springs were dry when they were there, but that doesn't mean that they are consistently dry. And yeah. So I am a little concerned about that. Guess we would have to write in some stuff. What, what would it take to put in a sixty or fifty foot buffer around that one spring?
There, there's one spring that is, right now you are within, gosh, five, ten feet of the road.
Right, right.
Right now.
Yeah.
So we would have to re, you'd have to redo the entire road with a major jog. To get a fifty foot from it because it's being violated right now, along with one piece of the. Of the found wetland. But now the wetlands, of course, we would be, you know, we wouldn't be doing any violations to the stream and being adhering to and. Willing to do everything we can. We just believe that it would be very difficult on those two occasions to get that full fifty feet that Julie was requesting.
Commissioner Jones.
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on that a little. So the road already has, has already caused problems with the spring and the wetlands. Do you foresee any future impacts on those?
No, we would be, there, there are criteria to being able to. That has been set forth by hydrogeology and also our environmental study on how to mitigate that. And it doesn't look like there's any type, currently any type of permitting on what has been done there, but we want it to be an open book and disclose that that's happening. And so that we want to do our best to mitigate that now. And they've given some guidelines on just those two occasions. And we would like to adhere to the guidelines that Julie is asking for, for the new 50-foot buffer from everything else that we encounter, to make sure it's done responsibly. But those two are already in that scenario now.
Thank you. I was also wondering, why, why is the land not usable now?
There are deep quarry holes in it, and so you would have to fill those quarry holes anyway, you know, and bring, and then also the viability of bringing it up a little bit higher to create a level pad for future possible buildability, even though we are not planning on, we don't have anything in the works, we're just making, it's the start of that process to get to that place.
I would like to kind of point out that the land is being used right now, just not by human beings. Also, what I'm wondering about is, will there be someone onsite who will be supervising and making sure that all of these conditions are actually adhered to? Testing and inspections and all are wonderful, but they only happen intermittently. And so often, when you catch something after the fact, all you can do is say, oh, well, you already did it, so I guess it's okay. Will there be someone there?
I'll let AJ come up and answer that, since he'll be doing the ongoing operations. But I do know that stormwater and our, we are going to, as part of this approval, you are approving an ongoing contract for testing through those two agencies as well, and it will be third party, so it won't be of interest to the Heritage Group or, or something like that. And so that is important. That will help with, hopefully alleviate some of your concerns. But I'll let him answer the part about someone from their group being onsite.
AJ Chandler with Milestone. Yeah, in regards to your question, someone will not be onsite every day. There will not be activity on the site every day. But when there is activity on the site, we will be checking it as that activity proceeds. We're currently working on the details of the access plan, but probably, you know, to include obviously such things as gates, but obviously cameras are probability too, license plate readers, all of that stuff, to let us know who's there and when they're there. And, and that stuff will, you know, as your security cameras do at home, you know, show up, we have an individual within our company that's our, our coordinator for our dump sites, and they'll be responsible for monitoring that access.
Thank you.
I have a few questions as well, and I'm not sure who to direct them to from the two of you, but I appreciate that you're both here. Ms. Kroselius, could you put that map up that, on the screen, that shows the location of the karst and the streams and the sinking stream? And I know I see Ms. Nestor Jellin has her hand raised, and we'll get to her in a moment, but... Could we get that map back up on the screen?
Yes, let me make sure Anne can still hear you. I'll make sure we get that. Thank you.
I apologize, I hit leave meeting instead of slideshow, or share screen. Okay. Is this the image, Julie?
Yeah, yes, perfect. That's it. That's exactly it. Thank you so much. Um, petitioners, could you point out the one, the, the items that, by number, so that the audience can follow? Which, which sites you're saying you cannot do a 50-foot conservancy area around?
SPO 4.
Okay. And that's because of the driveway?
That's correct.
Okay. What's the other one?
It is a strip of wetland from our other environmental impact report. It's not on this map.
Okay, it's not on this map?
Two separate reports. One is a karst report, the other one is an environmental impact.
Where, where is, where is it on, it's not listed on this map, but it is on this map. So where is that area? Is it close to the ramp?
It is at the end of the current road. I'll point to it on the screen if that helps.
Okay, okay. Okay, got it. All right. So it's just, I guess that, at that point, it's north.
Well, and you have that sinking spring in the far right also, but that's, that they can take care of.
Right. But of course, yeah, I am a little worried about SPO 4, but you know what? Kelsey is so good. I'm not, I'm not gonna, yeah, worry about that. So, thank you for that. Something came, came to me as you were all talking, looking at the, obviously, we've just gone through a really long drought phase in this county, really long one. So if you were moving dirt or crushing concrete and there aren't any residences around here, there's a police station, there's obviously a state police station, but if, if there's a lot of dust created, that could be a hazard for that on-ramp. So is that something that you all are aware of and will address if it comes up?
Absolutely. I mean, that, that absolutely has to be, we didn't put any commitment, because that is a normal part of a, well, actually, a CSGP state statute that you can't, you have to, if it gets real dry, you have to water it and have those types of, you know, practices in, in place. So that's absolutely, now, it would have to be real dry and you have to have a lot of traffic for it to reach the on-ramp, but that is a part of, I believe that would be a part of our CSGP, that we'd have to keep a maintained access to the site that's actively working. Now, normally, you would have a, a rock so that any kind of soils that come off your wheels don't get onto the highway system. And so I would think that it's safe to say, we're gonna, we would need to take a look at that drive before we start, and especially if it's any type of season that has heavy dumping. Now, I'm not sure what kind of, if that will occur, if there'll be, you know, maybe a few weeks where there is heavy time where there's a lot going on, but that would absolutely, I, without a doubt, yes, the answer's yes.
I just wanted to raise that. And just, just so my colleagues know, so one of the things that came up, so I initially was opposed to this, because I hate the idea of the fill and God knows what's in there and all that stuff. But the only way we can get a historic overlay on the historic portion of this property is to do this, because otherwise, we get no historic overlay. So that is why I voted yes for this on, on the Plan Commission. One more quick question. Would PCBs come up in any of those, if there were PCBs in the soil, would that reflect in those tests? Would those tests catch that?
Absolutely. That is our, one of the most important ones to test for, and we must, that one is, throws a huge red flag, stop operations, figure out where it's coming from. And that's why we're going to do testing before and after our site, to figure out, is it even coming from our site? And that's part, part of our contract.
It may already be there. It may already be there.
It may be, and that's why we would like to test before and after.
Perfect. Thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Lovely. So let's go ahead and hear from folks. First, we will hear from people who are supportive, who support this petition. Each person has three minutes to speak. You may raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill. While we're waiting for that, Ms. Nestor Jellin, I'm sorry, could we hear from you? You had your hand raised.
Sure. I just wanted to quickly note just some things that I had heard from the petitioners and how to address that. So I believe Mr. Butler stated that hours of operation would be only during business hours. We don't have a restriction in the written commitment in the North Park 2 ordinance or in our county zoning ordinance that restricts to just business hours. So I'd like to see them amend the written commitment to add hours of operation, if that's their intent. I also just want to remind everyone that when the development plan for this, if approved, gets submitted, it would still be applicable to the stormwater ordinance in place at that time. There is a method to go through, you know, if they need a waiver or some sort of relief from the stormwater ordinance, but just don't want to give the impression that this would supersede the stormwater ordinance, because the development plan would be subsequently filed and subject to the rules in place at that time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. So anybody wish to speak in favor of this petition? You'll have three minutes per person. Please give us your name and county of residence. You can raise your hand on teams or come to the podium in Nat U Hill.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Randy Cassidy, citizen, and I'd like to speak in favor of the position, specifically for the reason that Julie just mentioned, or Commissioner Thomas just mentioned in regards to the historic overlay of the historic line shaft and the way that that is laid out. Given the Commissioner's commitment to a limestone heritage park across the street, the visual impact of this, of this line shaft that the petitioner has said will lay out into a historical overlay, while I share the other concerns in regards to it, preserving that long-term history, heritage, and that incoming area of our community, as you've laid out into the quarry park on the other side of having that, as this develops over the next 50 years, that line shaft, the quarry park, makes for a phenomenal entrance into our community that will long outlast all of us. So that's the primary reason that I would be in support. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak in favor of this petition? Raise your hand on teams or come to the podium. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, you may come to the podium or raise your hand on teams. Please. Please reset the clock. TSD? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Joe David. This proposed development of the site, it, according to what I'm understanding, is that the end goal is to create a flat table on part of the property, upon which then the property can later be sold for industrial development. There are several issues that I'm concerned about. It's my understanding that the fill materials will not be restricted to fill materials coming from outside of the county. They could be coming from anywhere. Both the city and the county have reached out to express their interest in depositing fill material there, and that currently, a $75 tipping charge is paid per triaxle when the county and the city take their materials out to Rogers and deposit it there, where Rogers crushes it and uses it in some of their, some of their areas. So this is going to be essentially a commercial operation. There'll be people coming in, tipping, and then others will come in and tip on top of the tip, and then others will come in and tip on top of that tip. And before you know it, the fill materials will be buried. And quarterly testing is not enough. How, how does one know what is buried beneath over the previous three months? Be very challenging. It's definitely going to change the hydrology of the area. If you are familiar with the typical conditions of the Monroe County landfill before it was closed down after the fire, if you would drive along the edges of it, there was affluent in the, along the edges of the roads. This is going to be happening here. There'll be a constant affluence. It's not going to be natural necessarily, just water. It's going to be whatever got dropped in there, whatever is going to be resultant of once this portion of the property is made flat and impervious, and the future industrial developers that come in and purchase this, their waters will run off into this area that is supposed to be historically preserved or looked after. That's a very, that's a very big concern on my part. So obviously, crushing is an issue as well. That's going to create a lot of dust.
You're out of time.
Okay, thank you. And the roadways are going to be damaged by the heavy triaxles. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak in opposition to this petition? Okay. Petitioner, you have time to respond or rebut. I believe you have five minutes, right? Wasn't it five? Yeah, it's five.
I can check.
I think it's five. Go ahead.
Just, just a response to that, this is in no way, not even close to a landfill of any sort. This is, we're not even allowing construction materials in here from other sites. This is, now, there, if there is clean concrete that can be crushed, it can be used in a appropriate fill operation that would allow for appropriate compaction. We won't even, we're not even allowing asphalt, no asphalt at all. We, we're not allowing anything like that. We're not allowing construction debris, nothing. And this is not for anyone. Not for anyone, only for the owner. Okay, I want to just make sure everyone understands, this is not for someone to say, hey, we'll give you $75 and we'll let us dump. Nope, not happening. So just, I just want to clarify that above and beyond, but that would all, be all for now.
Yeah. Okay, so two questions for you before you leave the podium, or, or for the petitioner himself. Would you be amenable to amending the conditions to include a 50-foot SCA around those areas indicated on the map? And that you would operate, that any noise would be limited to business hours, as you've, you've stated? Would both of those conditions? Okay.
Absolutely. But he's already indicated that business hours is, is great, works for them, and that we want to follow the rules and guidelines that are currently in.
Perfect. Yeah, but Ms. Nestor Jellin said that it's not in the conditions, and it should be, if that's okay. So that's, okay. So those two conditions would be added to this petition, and obviously, they have to be written by our legal staff, but I'm, thank you for your work on this and your flexibility. And, all right, so, any other comments, questions?
Okay. I do want to say that I don't like this project. I don't like seeing the land altered in this way. I agree with the state that I-69, people traveling on it deserve to see something other than heavy industry or whatever will end up there. I, there's just a lot I don't like about it. But I do want to see the historic preservation. And it does sound like you're very committed to doing this in the most responsible way possible. So I will support it, but it's not very happily.
Mr. Githens, did you want to make any other comments?
No. Well, I guess there's one. We, we are often criticized for not providing the land for different kinds of development. And so I think this actually shows our support for, for doing that kind of thing.
We should do better at manufacturing land that has sewer already on it. That's what we have to do. I'll work on that.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you again, petitioners, and thank you for the public, and I appreciate everybody's work on this. So to ordinance 2024-40, we're adding two conditions, including a 50-foot sinkhole conservancy area to be, to replace the 25-foot on the Hydrology, Inc. report. And... on the hydrology ink report. And business hours...
Operations.
Yeah.
For the crushing.
For the crushing. The crushing will only occur during regular business hours. And so with those two conditions, those would have to be added to the written commitment. All those in favor of supporting ordinance 2024-40 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero. There you go. We got there. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right, next item.
Oh dear. Move approval of ordinance 2024-36, the Thomas Historic Preservation Overlay Rezone.
We have a motion?
And this is not related...
Second.
Not related to Commissioner Thomas.
No, not mine. Wish it were, but it's not mine.
Or Thompson.
Yes. All right. I assume this is Mr. Myers. Yes, it is. Mr. Myers.
Thank you. Can you hear me all right?
We can.
Okay, great. I'm going to share my presentation here. All right, so this is ordinance 2024-36, also known as REZ-24-4. It's the Thomas HP Overlay Rezone. It's one parcel. It's 0.74 acres in Salt Creek Township, Section 5. And it is on State Road, East State Road 46 at 6056. And the owners are Creighton and Shannon Thomas. So the request is to establish the historic preservation overlay at this address. The petitioner is requesting the overlay at this location in order to provide protections and preservation of the existing structures, citing the following criteria from Chapter 810-3. Number one, in association with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of county history. And number three, the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. According to the state historic architectural and archaeological research database, also known as SHARD, the property is listed as contributing. A contributing rating is given to any property meeting the basic inventory criterion of being pre-1940, and such resources are important to the density or continuity of the area's historic fabric. The petition site does exhibit a single-family residence, and through research provided by the petitioner, they were able to pinpoint, it was the late 1800s, possibly in the 1860s, of when this property had received its first structure not being the residence. And there is also another structure on the property, a detached garage that appears like a carriage house type of structure. The original owner, after some research from the petitioner, they found that it was William Gregg Allen who served in Company One of the 38th Indiana Veteran Volunteer Infantry during the American Civil War. The petition site is also near a hill historic location known as Arbutus Hill, which is known for the presence of the arbutus flower, which is documented in local newspapers and is relevant to the history of Indiana University. Its staff and students used to make journeys out to this area of the county to view the growing arbutus flower in the hills in that area. More on that in a bit. The property was formerly operated as the Southern Comfort Bed and Breakfast, which was established in the year 2000. The petitioners have noted that they have no interest in resuming that use of bed and breakfast, but they did include the research that they performed about that bed and breakfast happening in the year 2000, as it was part of a growing trend in Monroe County for bed and breakfast in that time. The petitioner and the HP Board of Review agreed that the structure exhibits characteristics of a central passage/hall and parlor type of architecture that's from the 1850s, and that architecture type is more common in the southern states, so it is a little bit more of a rarity this far north in Indiana. Here's the location map. We're on East State Road 46. And then on the bottom right-hand side, I have the map that shows all these pink dots. This map is from the SHARD resource from the state. And each of these pink dots is a property that's listed as contributing. The blue star here indicates the subject property. And then over here on the eastern, if you keep going east on State Road 46, there's this road that you see here that I believe it's listed as, I can't read it there, but that road that travels south, that is allegedly the location of the Arbutus Hill, where the arbutus flower is known to grow. Here's the current zoning map. We have Conservation Residential as the existing zone. Now, HP overlay goes across the zoning district, the underlying zone. It does not affect the underlying zone, but does provide some flexibility with uses through the historic adaptive reuse classification, as well as applies the certificate of appropriateness process to any exterior changes made to the property, or I should say, of the historic structures documented on the property. Here we have some pictures. This is the single-family residence on the left side of the screen, and on the right side, you can see the carriage house there in the back. Chapter 810 of the historic preservation, or the Monroe County Ordinance, is the historic preservation chapter. And Chapter 810-3 lists several criteria that must be met in order for the HP Board to support a petition for the HP overlay. One or more of these criteria can be outlined or designated, or identified, excuse me, by the petitioner and endorsed by the board in order to proceed through this process. And after a lot of research, both from the petitioner and some assistance by the historic preservation board, as well as the Indiana Room and the Monroe County History Center, they came to the conclusion that items or criteria number one and three have applied to this property. And those are shown on the screen here in bold. And I mentioned those again at the beginning of applying to this property. So here, we have the letter to the Plan Commission and Board of Commissioners from the petitioner. So this is all included in the packet. It talks about some of the details of the research that they performed into the architecture style, as well as the original owner and some of the other components of the property that make it special. Here we have some hand-drawn layouts of the building provided by the petitioner, and this information was utilized to also help with identifying the hall and parlor, central passage style type of architecture. Here on the left side of the screen, we have the original land grant to the original owner, Mr. Allen, the Civil War veteran. And then we have also on the right side of the screen some details about the taxes on the property, as well as improvements made. So there's a chain of information there that was able to be utilized to help identify when exactly the structures appeared on the property. And you can see the property taxes increase with the improvements as well, and that was what gave a hint of when structures became built on the property. Okay, so here we have some information that was also included by the petitioner. On the left side of the screen, we have a newspaper snippet that calls out to the Arbutus Hill, and there's more clippings of that in the staff report. On the right side of the screen, we have a hall and parlor, just a description of that type of architecture, and that is representative on the petition site. Okay, so that brings us to the recommendation. July 15, 2024, the Monroe County Historic Preservation Board of Review voted six to zero to forward this petition to the Monroe County Plan Commission with a positive recommendation, citing criteria number one and number three of Chapter 810-3. And then again, on August 20, 2024, the Monroe County Plan Commission voted nine to zero to forward this petition to the Board of Commissioners with a positive recommendation and no conditions of approval. I will now take any questions.
All right. Thank you so much. Mr. Myers, comments, questions? Commissioner Giffens?
My only comment is I really enjoyed seeing all the pictures, especially of the interior of the place.
Yeah. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it's a really lovely house, and I very much support this. I am curious, do you know if the arbutus flower still exists there?
I do not know personally. I did not dive that deep into my research of that area and the history of the flower, but I do believe that there are spots in the county where it does still grow, although I can't confirm that.
Thank you.
Is the IU yearbook called the Arbutus?
Yeah.
Yes.
Arbutus Street and off of Third. Yeah. Great. Thank you, and kudos to the property owners for protecting this for future generations. It's really important. It's a great, it's a great house. It's amazing. So let's see if the petitioner is present. On Teams?
They need to raise their hand if they wish to speak.
There we go. Perfect. I thought I saw them on there. If you could promote them, T S D, and... Let them speak. You have 15 minutes.
Looks like they're still muted.
They're still muted. You need to unmute. There you go. Perfect. Great. There you go. We see you. We hear you. Excellent. Thank you.
Well, we'll just make it, we'll make a brief. I just want to thank everyone, the Commissioners, and really a lot of, a big shout out to Drew and everyone at the Preservation Board. We've been working on this for a good six, seven months, and Drew and the gang's have been very patient with us because this is our, this is our first time kind of venturing into anything like this. And we bought this house in just 2022. So we've only been here a couple of years. And we know, we originally, I told the story to Drew and the gang in the last meeting, but you know, we just bought this house because we liked it. It was a cool old house, and we really had no idea anything about the history of it or like what we were even getting to. And then Shannon just got into the, just started to just kind of dig around and find things out about the history of the house. And then I started to look a little closer on kind of how things were built, and it has this incredible timber framing like we see down in the basement in some of the pictures. And it really just kind of sparked it for us. And here we are, seven months later.
Great. Thank you so much. Do my colleagues have any questions for the petitioners? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't.
Commissioner Giffens?
No.
No, and we do want to thank you for doing this. It's really important for our community. So thank you so much for taking this on, right? This is huge.
Yeah, and yeah, I just wanted to add, I mean, as Shannon just mentioned it to me earlier, you know, we kind of feel like it's, because of the history and Mr. Allen, and we feel like it's just, you know, a piece of property that needs to be preserved for, you know, the future. And we would hate to see it, you know, if this house was to ever be, you know, torn down. I mean, I mean, this is it. It's one of a kind with the, you know, the house and the history and the owners. And there's no replacing. So we just kind of feel like it's really important.
Yep. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Let's see if there's anyone who wishes to speak in support of this petition. You may come to the podium in Nat U Hill or raise your hand on Teams. Does anybody wish to speak in opposition to this petition? You may come to the podium or raise your hand on Teams. All right, C. None. Did you have anything else you wanted to add, sir?
No, that, no, that's it. I just wanted to thank everyone for their further time.
Great. Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Any other comments from my colleagues on this? All right. With that, and again, Mr. Myers, thank you so much for your work on this. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2024-36 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries three zero with our gratitude. All right. One more. Approval of ordinance 2024-37, Patterson Rezone.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and it's still Mr. Myers. Thank you.
Thank you. So this property is located at 3478 South Knight Ridge Road. It's one parcel. It's 2.13 acres in Salt Creek Township, Section 17, and it's owned by Stephen and Mary Ann Patterson. It's currently zoned pre-existing business, and it is in the ECO overlay area three. The reason for this request is to rezone the property from pre-existing business to a state residential. The petitioner is requesting the rezone to construct a residence and a residential storage structure on the petition site. The property is currently zoned pre-existing business, which does not permit residential land uses. In 2023, the petitioner submitted a demolition permit that removed all pre-existing non-conforming residential structures from the property. So now the property is currently vacant. The petitioner is originally planned to construct a large residential storage structure on the property. However, in communication with the planning staff, it was indicated to them that the property is zoned pre-existing business and that the size of the residential storage structure is limited based on the fact that there is not an existing residence on the property. So therefore, the petitioner went through some updates to their plans. They do now plan to include a dwelling unit within the structure that they originally proposed. And in order to get the right zoning to establish residential uses on the property, they filed this rezone petition to go from pre-existing business to a state residential. Now, they originally did have ideas to convert to Conservation Residential, which is more akin to the area. However, that minimum lot size for that zone is 2.5 acres. So they still would have been under the minimum lot size and therefore still would have required a minimum lot size variance to develop the property. So they elected to choose the state residential zone in order to have that minimum lot size of one acre so that they could avoid that additional variance process. So on the screen, I have included the definitions for pre-existing business district, as well as the state residential district. Both of these are included in the staff report. Here on the screen, we have the, on the right side of the screen, we have a table that shows the comparison between the state residential district and the pre-existing business district with respect to minimum lot width changes, as well as a bit difference in setbacks, lot coverage, and things like that. I will note, the draft zoning map of the county development ordinance indicates that this subject property will transition into the Conservation Residential 2.5 zone, if not rezoned under this petition. Under the CVR zone and having only 2.13 acres, the property would still require minimum lot size variance that I mentioned before. So if this property is rezoned a state residential under the current zoning ordinance, then when the CDO passes, it will likely transition the property into a similar zone referred to as Residential One or RES zone. So that, again, would allow them to have the minimum lot size standard of one acre and avoid the need to have a minimum lot size variance go through the border zoning appeals. Here we have the location map. It's on South Knight Ridge Road, which is just off of State Road 446. And on the right side, we have the zoning map that shows the pink here is the pre-existing business area. You'll also note that the property lines appear to extend south a little bit more. That also encapsulates a portion of the Forest Reserve zoning district. So based on that parcel information, it looks like it's a split-zone lot, actually. So it's also worth noting that these parcel lines on Elevate aren't always 100% accurate, but it is worth noting that there's a possible split zoning. So theoretically speaking, it's being rezoned from both of those to the estate residential district. Here on the screen, we have the buildable area. So there's buildable area towards the north end of the property, near South Knight Ridge Road. That's all under 12%. They are into the ECO Area Three, which does prohibit land disturbance activities on slopes greater than 18%. So that is the areas that you see in the yellow, orange, and red, and those are all part of the environmental constraints overlay in protections of the Lake Monroe watershed. Okay, here we have the letter from the petitioner stating their request. This is also included in the packet. And here we have a conceptual site plan of the structure that they were proposing. Now, this conceptual site plan does not include the addition of the dwelling unit within the proposed structure. Again, that came about after... Again, that came about after communications with staff about having a storage structure of this size on the property without having a primary residence also in the property. If you have a primary residence on the property, the size of the storage structure is not limited to a certain square footage as long as you still meet the maximum building coverage standards per the zoning that you're in. But if you don't have a primary residence on the property, there are some restrictions to the square footage of a storage structure on a residential lot. Okay, so on this screen now, we have the use table for pre-existing business, as well as the use table for a state residential. You'll note that there's a lot of uses available to the pre-existing business district. And that is because the way that the pre-existing business district works is if you are a vacant property or are previously operated as a use that had low intensity, then you are technically allowed to operate of any business that's available in the general business district or the limited business district, as long as the intensity is the same or lesser. So given that it's a vacant property, they're allowed to operate any of those uses on the lower intensity classification. And I will note that these, at least the pre-existing business side of this table, does not include the condition numbers that are sometimes associated with some of these uses. And then on the right, of course, we have the state residential use table. That's obviously a lot more geared towards residential-type uses and things like that. The petitioner did state they have no interest in operating a business on the property. They only want to operate residential uses there. Okay, so that brings us to the recommendation. Staff recommends forwarding, or recommended to the Plan Commission, forwarding a positive recommendation to the Monroe County Board of Commissioners based on the petition's compatibility with the Monroe County Comprehensive Plan and subject to Highway Engineer and MS4 coordinator reports. And then on August 20, the Monroe County Plan Commission voted 9 to 0 to forward this petition to the Board of Commissioners with that positive recommendation and no conditions of approval. I will now take any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Myers. Comments, questions? Commissioner Jones?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Commissioner Githens?
Last night, we were accused of not providing land for housing. I'm glad that we can, we can provide at least one additional lot.
Yeah. Yeah, so could you put up the map that shows the surrounding zones? Because ours is only in black and white in the packet. I'm not sure why. That's it. Okay. So... Is there a, where is the lot line around the Forest Reserve?
So down here on the bottom, the south end of the property, the lot line is identified in blue. And it extends a little bit farther south past where the pink ends. And there's that slice of Forest Reserve there.
Okay, so this is, so the lot line is more accurate than the shading, right? The pink shading?
I believe so. It's hard to tell without a survey because of Elevate's not always 100% accurate.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Is the petitioner present to speak, Patterson's? You may raise your hand on Teams. Yes. TSD, can you promote SP? And then, I believe it's Mr. Patterson. So Mr. Patterson, you have 15 minutes to present when you're ready.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Yes, we appreciate that. The wife and I are very interested in moving out to the Knight Ridge area and found the property and totally appreciate Drew Meyer's assistance in getting me through the process. It has been more drawn out than I had anticipated. However, it's going in the right direction, I think. And we're pretty excited to be able to get the building permit application put in and get the right building put up there and use the property for our residence. We've been in Monroe County since 1969. We lived out on Lake Monroe for the first 33 years and then moved into town while we were transitioning for vacationing in Florida in the winter. But we're back now for, to stay, and we're looking to build a house. And we thank you very much for your time and effort on this.
You're quite welcome. Let's see if my colleagues have any questions for you. I don't have any questions for you. Commissioner Githens?
I just hope that if there are trees at the back of the property in the Forest Reserve, that the couple's able to maintain them.
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you.
My wife won't let me cut trees.
Yeah, good. Commissioner Jones, questions for the petitioner?
No, actually, I don't.
Okay, so no other questions from us. We're going to go ahead and take public comment. You're welcome to stay on, please. And you may rebut any public comment that you hear. So first, we will hear from those who support this petition. You may raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. Seeing none, all those in opposition to this petition, raise your hand on Teams or come to the podium in Nat U. Hill. All right. Seeing none, did you have any last comments, Mr. Patterson?
Just again, thank you very much for your participation in this.
Thank you. All right. Anything else for Mr. Myers or any? Okay. Great. With that, I'm going to call the question on ordinance 2024-37, the Patterson Rezone. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, zero. So 3-0, that passes. We're finally through our agenda. Yes. Yep. All right, so, so quick, and I will be quick with the announcements, believe me. All right, so we do have one more CDO public hearing. It will be Tuesday, October 1st, beginning at 5:30 here in the Nat U. Hill Room. We do have the Hoosier Hills Food Bank donation barrel in the rotunda of the courthouse. Please bring in your non-perishable food items. No glass, please. And we are accepting applications for all boards and commissions. Go to co.moneroe.in.us for more information and to fill out an application. We also continue to have office hours via Teams. And you just go to the calendar at co.moneroe.in.us and you will find the dates and times of those meetings, six of them a month. And you can also, while you're at our website, sign up for the Resident Alert Notification System with the big megaphone in the center of the page. The next blood drive, Wednesday, October 16, 10 a.m. to 3:00. Thursday, October 17, 1:00 to 6 p.m. Go to redcross.org to make an appointment. These blood drives are held at IB Tech in Shreve Hall. And we appreciate all of that effort. Do you, either of you have anything else you wish to? Anything else I've missed? Okay, great. We do have a work session, so we will come back at... I know.
Sorry.
She needs combat, too. Can we come back at 2 o'clock with that work session? We have one item. It'll be quick, I think. I hope. All right, one item on the work session. Our next meeting is October 2nd here at the Nat U. Hill Room at 10 a.m. Wednesday.
I have a couple based upon this morning's conversation.
Okay.
Things for you guys.
Great. We'll talk about it. That'll be great. So we'll be back at 2 p.m.